Hey guys, welcome back to the channel. This is story about what if Naruto scares the council part one. Before I start, please do support for more amazing content and comments for part two. Do consider to subscribe my channel and share my video to your friends and check out the description as well. Let's start the video. Naruto sama, you have visitors. Naruto raised his head to look at the young brunette who just entered his office. Her name was Akira, Naruto's personal assistant. She was a beautiful pixie-like woman a few years older than Naruto himself. Who is it? Naruto asked softly, remembering that he had no appointments this evening.
One Miss Sakura Haruno from Kanoa, Naruto sama.
Naruto blinked, surprised. Sakura?
Here. Seeing her boss's perplexed state, the woman said worried. I can tell her that you are not available.
It's okay Akira. She won't leave until she simi sent her in. In ten minutes, I need some time to organize my thoughts. Akira nodded respectfully and exited the office. Alone in his office again, Naruto leaned back in the executive chair and let his thoughts wander. It has been ten years since his banishment from Kanoa. All because of the same person who was currently visiting. They had kicked him out of his village, shattered his dreams, all because he bought back his traitorous teammate. Use of unnecessary force, murder attempt, disregard of orders, demon scum. You lied to us, you are a monster. How dare you do that to Sasuke kun. We risked our lives trying to bring him back, and you tried to kill him because you are jealous. I am ashamed to say that you are my student, Naruto. Naruto, I only asked you to bring him back, not kill him. Do you know how important Sasuke is to the village? I am sorry Naruto. If I try to help you, the council will banish me too. Accusations kept replaying in his mind like a broken record. Everyone he thought as his precious people had abandoned him. It hurts so much. Those that didn't see him as a monster saw him as an irresponsible idiot run by his jealousy. Sunade, Iroka, Jiraya, every last one of them. After all he had done, they discarded him like trash. So why are they here now? He knows for sure that Sakura didn't come alone. What should he do? Act like she hadn't stabbed him in the back? Or be furious, and try to smash her head in? Try as he might, he couldn't be angry anymore. He had forgotten all his anger, a long time ago. Holding grudges was not Naruto's specialty anyway. But no matter what he did, he knows he knows that he needs to go back to Kanoa. There was a short knock. Come in, he muttered preparing himself. The door opened and Sakura Haruno entered in all her pink-haired glory. Hello Naruto kun, she said with a soft tone that was filled with something that sounded like guilt. Her beautiful emerald eyes filled with tears. And Naruto couldn't help the gentle smile that spread on his lips. That was all Sakura needed to launch herself towards Naruto, and take him in a desperate and bone-crushing hug. Her loud sobs echoing across the office as both of them fell out of the chair and onto the marble floor, but still in an embrace. Naruto didn't mind. He just simply kept holding her silently, until the woman ran out of tears. Two months earlier. Sakura, Hokage sama wishes to see you. Shizen told Sunade's second apprentice. Huh, I wonder why? Sakura pondered. It's about a mission. Shizen shrugged. Sakura nodded and left to meet her teacher. When she arrived at the Hokage's office, she saw that teammate, nine and ten along with their sensei were there. She saw her own teammates, Sasuke and Sai, and sensei as well. Now that Sakura is here. I'll explain the mission to you. Everyone stood at attention. You all know that over the past ten years, the condition of the village is steadily deteriorating. We have lost all our allies including Sand Village, Spring, Wave, Tea and Moon countries, and we all know that this is because of our own mistake. Many of them lowered their heads remembering about how they disregarded Kanoa's sunshine. Everything came crashing down when he was gone. Naruto was banished as soon as news spread that Sasuke was in coma. Sasuke woke up a week after Naruto's banishment. They only understood the depth of what they had done once Inoichi had run a mental checkup on Sasuke to make sure he was sane, and had seen the memories of his fight with Naruto. Inoichi was quick to explain everything to Sunade who had been horrified that Naruto had came so close to dying. Yet he held back so as not to harm Sasuke. And the thanks he gets was banishment. But no matter how much she tried, the council kept her from revoking the banishment. All of their ally countries and villages were thankful to the Uzumaki in many ways and once news spread of his banishment, their relationship with Kanoa became strained. Many of the rookies also felt guilty except a select few. Jiraya had spent all his resources trying to locate Naruto, and failed. Two years later, when the Hidden Village of Demons were established, all of Kanoa's allies cut their ties and instead became allies with the village. The council was furious at the loss of their allies and had ordered to attack Demon Village which Sunade was able to put a stop to, or else they would have been slaughtered. The ninjas of Demon Village were more efficient as well as more compassionate. To all their surprise, Demon Village never attacked any other village, instead established a peace treaty with every village except Kanoa. Demon Village was known for many things, their advanced technology, sealing techniques, kujutsu and the main fact that they were a peaceful village in and out. They were powerful but compassionate. They became quite popular amongst small non-shinobi villages and as well as shinobi villages. They had even attempted peace talks with Kanoa, but sadly that ended in a disaster because of the council. It was only luck that the village didn't declare war on Kanoa for such disrespect. But as it is, their kage was a very benevolent and peaceful man. Sound Village has declared war on us and we have no allies. The rookies gasped. That is why I am giving you this mission. I and the council have come to a decision that all our problems was caused by the banishment of Uzumaki Naruto. So your mission is to retrieve him. Again, they all gasped, and then became happy. With Naruto back in the village, we can get back our allies and have the power of the QB by our side. Sunade said. We will bring the baka back Sunade sama, you can count on us. Sakura said with a determined grin. They searched for Naruto for a total of two months, yet they didn't get any clue as to where the blonde is. Their last place of searching was the famous Demon Village. They requested for a meeting with the Onikage. The Onikage will be meeting you now. A young red-haired emerald-eyed girl came and announced. She looked like the secretary of the kage. But I cannot allow all of you to enter the office. Kakashi nodded. In the end Kakashi, Asuma, Karina, Guy and Shikamaru entered the office. The rest were allowed to relax in the lounge near the office. The Onikage was a breathtaking sight. The young man looked to be around his mid-twenties, had ruby red hair that was long, and reached mid-back with a spiky fringe framing his forehead. He had mesmerizing sunset orange eyes and aristocratic features that would make men and women drool alike. The pale milky skin and the slender neck everyone present was disappointed that the rest of the skin was hidden inside his robes. The Onikage chuckled and only then did they realize that they were blatantly staring. I am Kaishiro Kurama, the shodai Onikage. What brings Kanoa Shinobi to our humble village? The deep husky voice had them shivering in delight. They all bowed in respect. Onikage sama, we came in search of someone. Kakashi said. And who might that someone be? Uzumaki Naruto, a former member of our village. Asuma said. They all saw the Onikage become confused. What do you wish to do with him? He's here? Kakashi asked surprised. Yes, and he is very much under my protection. So I ask again what your intention with him is? The Onikage narrowed his eyes in suspicion and slight anger. We merely wish to speak with him, Onikage sama. We intend no harm. It will be troublesome if Naruto is under the Onikage's protection. We don't want to cause an international event. Shikamaru thought. I see the Onikage studied them for a moment. The heavy gaze was unsettling yet undeniably hot. One of my shinobi will escort you to his office. Do not do anything that will bring my wrath upon you Kanoa ninja. He is someone well respected within this village. The Onikage's words surprised the shinobi present. It seems that Naruto have a good life here. This will surely reduce their chances of bringing him back. But hopefully Naruto still loves Kanoa. A shinobi appeared inside the office and a shanshin startling them. AI, take these Kanoa ninja to visit Naruto san. AI was a male with bright blonde hair and bluish-green eyes. He was pale and had boyish but handsome features. He looked at the Kanoa ninja suspiciously, before looking at the Onikage with a little doubt. The Onikage only nodded his head at AI. The boy sighed and said, follow me. And then he walked out of the office. Once outside, the rest of the group joined them. Where are we going? Sasuke asked annoyed. To meet Naruto Kakashi said. He's here? Sakura asked surprised. Apparently he is someone very well respected in this village. Asuma said. This caused some of them to frown. Obviously none of them knows about the QB. If they did, they wouldn't give him any respect. Sakura said with a scoff. Everyone in the village knows about Naruto sama and QB sama, Kunoichi san. AI who was walking ahead said causing their eyes to widen. So then obviously you are using him for his power. You only keep him here because he is a gingeriki. Ino said smugly, like she discovered some secret. AI gave her a look that meant, are you fucking retarded? This caused Ino to scowl. What? She snapped. AI only shook his head and walked forward. Why do you find it so difficult to believe that Naruto sama can find respect despite being a gingeriki? AI muttered so that only several of them really heard it. They all looked around. The village was very different from theirs. The buildings were all built differently, and uniquely. They were really beautiful. What is that? Ino asked seeing a woman tapping on some rectangular piece of device. Now that she noticed most people here had something similar to those. AI looked at what she was looking and said, that's the latest iPhone. Released just yesterday. Lucky lady stock was all out by the time I went to buy. The last part was grumbled out. An iPhone? Sakura asked confused. It's a device used for communication and many other things. AI said rolling his eyes. Kiba scoffed. I don't see what's so special. It's obviously like wireless communicators only that iPhone S is way bulkier and inconvenient. His opinion soon changed when she saw another man doing a video chat, and some others taking selfies. They were all looking around amazed as tall skyscrapers came into view. This is the research and development zone. AI drawled. The Kanoa ninja were again surprised. An entire part of the city was dedicated to research and development. Oh, you said something about Naruto's office. Why does he have an office? Isn't he a shinobi? Kakashi asked. No, he is not a shinobi. Didn't you know that? This surprised all of them. Did Naruto quit being a shinobi? Sasuke scoffed. So the dope quit because he finally understood that he won't be a good shinobi. The others thought that this was because Naruto didn't want to become shinobi of any country other than Kanoa's. So what does he do exactly? Sakura asked as she snapped out of her stunned state. Architecture and many other things that you don't need to know about. AI added inside his mind. They were led before a grand building that was built beautifully. It was more innovative, and very beautiful. Ask at the reception, and they will show you to his office. With that, AI vanished in a shanshin. They all stood there for a second. Well, come on, let's go see the dope. Wait, I think it would be better if Sakura goes first. Kakashi said. Sakura nodded. Yeah, after all I am his Sakura chan. Sakura said in a sing-song voice. They decided that Sakura will go and convince Naruto. Sakura changed from her shinobi clothes into a sexy black short dress and did a little makeup. It would be easier to convince the baka that way. Add some waterworks and he will be putty in Sakura's hands. With everything set, Sakura entered the building. She had to admit that Naruto was very skilled as an architect. The inside of the building gave of a serene yet bright atmosphere. Maybe once he was back in the village, she can have him build a mansion for her. Can I help you miss? The man sitting at the reception asked. And Sakura had to wonder why every one of these village was so damn hot. Em, yes, I want to meet Naruto Uzumaki. She said in acute voice. Seduction was really Ino's field, but Sakura was not bad at it. Do you have an appointment? Um, no. But I was sent here by the Onikage. I see. What is your name and purpose of visit? Well, my name is Sakura Haruno, and I am an old friend of Naruto. You are a Kanoa ninja? The man asked suspiciously. Yes, she said quietly. I see one moment. The man took a phone and dialed the number. Akira, there is a woman here to see Naruto sama. She says Onikage sama sent her. Her name is Sakura Haruno, and is a ninja from Kanoa alright. He put the receiver down, and looked at Sakura again only this time more coldly. The phone rang and the man took it. Okay, his office is on the ninth floor. His secretary will be waiting for you there. Sakura nodded and went to the ninth floor. There she met the beautiful pixie-like woman who introduced herself. My name is Akira and I am Naruto sama's personal secretary. He will be seeing you now. The woman had led her to an office. Sakura prepared herself. This was her moment to shine. Naruto was not what she expected. She didn't expect him to be so fucking gorgeous. His golden blonde hair framed a handsome face, more tame but still slightly spiky. His azure eyes were sharper and more beautiful than she remembered. Surprisingly, the scars on his cheeks had vanished, but Sakura thought nothing of it. Strong narrow jaws and soft-looking pink lips and that delicious tan he was Adonis reincarnate. The suit he was wearing made her want to jump on him and ride him like no other. He looked so beautiful and ethereal untouchable, but she kept her act together. She couldn't get horny and forget her mission. And just like that, with one word. She had him in her palms. That soft kind smile he gave was enough permission for her. As she had him in her grasp, she could feel the well-defined body beneath that suit, and she had to disguise her moans into sobs. Naruto kind and naive has always bought her trick like she wanted him to. Well, at least that's what Sakura believed. Sakura, what are you doing here? Naruto asked in a hopeful voice. And Sakura knew exactly what he was hoping for, so she said with a bright smile and sparkling tears. Why do you ask that, you baka? Of course I am here for you. And when his eyes brightened up like a child who got a Christmas present, she knew she had him. Hook, line and sinker. Really? Of course. We all missed you so much, and you can call me Sakura chan, okay? No need to be afraid. How dare you call me Sakura chan after you did that to Sasuke kun, you monster? A voice reminded him exactly what she had said that day. I hate you, I hate you, go, and die. Nobody needs a demon like you do us all a favor and die. You do? But I thought you hated me, the vulnerable tone, averted eyes, and he looked like a kicked puppy of very adorable and sexy puppy. And it took all of her wa power not to kiss him senseless, although that would probably help the mission. Oh Naruto kun, you know I was just angry that day, angry and heartbroken. I was so stupid back then, I was hurt, and I took it all out on you. I really hurt you, didn't I? I am such an idiot, she sob began for effect. He became perplexed. Sakura knew Naruto could never become a good ninja because after all he tried, he was just a naive idiot who had no idea how to hide his emotions. The only great thing about him was the power of the demon, and maybe his newfound architectural skills. Once he gets back to Kanoa, they could use his expertise in renovating their buildings. Don't cry Sakura chan, I understand you, he hugged her tight and god. It felt so good that she almost cried out in ecstasy. Naruto, we want you back. She reluctantly let go of him and looked at him pleadingly. Want me back? Surprise, confusion, hope and happiness. She almost scoffed. It was so easy to read Naruto. Yes, she jumped up with an excited smile. The banishment has been lifted. You can come back home now. You can come back to me, she added for good measure. But what about the council? The villagers? They all want you back Narukun, she blushed at the nickname she accidentally used. The pleasant blush that spread through his cheeks was rewarding enough. He stood up excited just like her, and that brilliant idiotic grin she had seen years ago was back in his face. That's great. I am so happy. Sakura chan, do you have the official documents with you? I have to make sure everything is perfect, you know? And then I'll have to call my lawyer and finish all the paperwork. Oh god, there is so much to do. I am so happy Sakura chan. So happy. Even after all these years, his grin was still contagious. Actually, Kakashi sensei is here along with the rest of the rookies as well, guys team and all the senseis. He has the official documents about the banishment. Everyone's here? That's great. Oh, I can't meet them now. I have a meeting right now, actually. Wow. I really forgot the time he he. I am such a scatterbrain sometimes. More like always, you baka. She retorted but made sure that her tone held no bite. So he only grinned. Well, I am still Naruto. Some things will never change, you know? He said. She laughed. Akira. The moment he called, his PA came rushing in, but still held a ladylike grace that made Sakura slightly jealous. Not to mention that the woman was gorgeous. Yes, Naruto sama. Akira asked with a bow. I want you arrange accommodation for Sakura and the other ninjas from Kanoa. Rent the rooms at Mirage, nothing less for my friends. And arrange some people to assist them in sightseeing and settling in. Call my lawyer and tell him to meet me in five hours here at my office. Also, Sakura or someone else will give you some documents, and I want those to be delivered to my office as well in five hours. Okay? Yes, Naruto sama. Thank you Akira. And you can take the rest of the day off. You have been working so hard for the past few days, and from tomorrow onward we will have some added paperwork, so go to the spa and relax or something. Naruto added with a smile which made Sakura even more jealous of the woman. He was always kind to his employees and they loved him for it. Because they knew that their boss always appreciates their hard work. Thank you Naruto sama. You are too kind. With that, Akira left smiling. Really Naruto? You are too soft. Sakura scoffed. But Naruto just smiled. All my employees are hardworking people Sakura. They deserve the appreciation. Now Sakura chan, I have a meeting, so go and see Akira outside, okay? She would have arranged your guides and room. Okay Narukun. She said with a shy smile and left. As soon as she left the office, the door was locked. Naruto felt arms encircling him from behind, and he leaned into the muscular chest of his lover with a low growl. Why did you send that bitch here? You are angry, that's why you let that wench touch you to make me angry him? Yes. Do you think otherwise I would touch that filth? Naruto groaned as his lover nipped at his neck. Naruto knew very well how possessive his mate could be. His lover let out an angry growl. You smell of that filth. In a swift moment Naruto's expensive suit and every piece of cloth was ripped off his body and discarded in a pile at a corner. His lover flicked a hand and the pile started burning. Avert your eyes if you must, a yaoi lime is coming up. Naruto was now lying on his glass table pinned by his lover. He groaned when hands started roaming across his body. Kyoshiro. His lover, the shodai Onikage as well as his ex-prisoner. Kaishiro Kurama or better yet the shodai QB gazed at his squirming lover with smoldering orange eyes. I own you Naruto. A hand grabbed Naruto's hair roughly and lips kissed and sucked every bit of skin. Naruto groaned, moaned and cursed. You are mine. The delightful friction on their nether regions send them spiraling into ecstasy, both of them moaned. I won't allow such filth to lay their hands on what's mine. A hard bit at the mating mark on the juncture of Naruto's neck and shoulder, that sent Naruto over the edge. You are the only one I would let live after after treating me like their damned property. Naruto growled out between pants, and then bit hard on the mating mark that was on Kaishiro at the same place as Naruto's. Kaishiro came with a groan. Done. Naruto stood naked with a pout on his face. You burned my clothes, Kyo. And I don't have a spare. You are better looking like that. Kaishiro said smirking while his eyes enjoyed the sight before him. An innocent, and very dangerous, smile appeared on Naruto's face. Really? Then I should probably meet my lawyer like this. After all, I need to be in my best appearance. Naruto said the last part with a low husky tone and a very innocent sexy pose. Kaishiro growled, even the thought of anyone seeing his mate like this would send him into a rage. He quickly unsealed another suit and handed it to Naruto. You had this all along, Naruto shook his head with a smile. It was Kaishiro's suit. But Naruto loved wearing his mate's clothes, so he didn't mind. Both of them were almost the same size with Kaishiro only being an inch or two taller and little more bulky muscles. So what do you plan on doing? Kaishiro asked. I'll send my lawyer to Kanoa. Once the banishment and that stupid restrictions they set for me is removed, everything will go according to plan. You know they will try to force you into becoming their ninja, right? And that's why I am sending Chris there. That guy is the best lawyer in Elemental Nations. He will finish everything perfectly. And besides, I am an official citizen of Demon Village. They cannot force me into doing anything. Everything will go according to plan, and we will get what we need from Kanoa. So what do you think, Chris? Naruto asked as he leaned back in his executive chair. Christopher Tallon's Naruto's lawyer as well as a longtime friend looked over the documents. Everything's good. They have removed the banishment as well as the restrictions. And it's approved by the fire daimyo. So yeah, we're all set. They've even said that whatever property you previously owned would be given back to you. Chris scoffed. He could understand why they placed that particular statement. They foolishly believe that he don't know about his parentage. Naruto chuckled darkly. We can use that particular statement to our profit, can't we? Of course. Even if they've already destroyed documents relating you to the Namakes and Uzumaki, it is only a matter of evidence before we could prove it. They never change, do they? Nothing's mentioned about returning the money they had extracted from you as part of the banishment. Money doesn't matter. But we need access to my clan compounds. Our agents are already in place, right? Yes. In the time that the council is focused on you, the properties we want will be ours. Good. I don't want to waste such an opportunity. Send the necessary petition to the fire daimyo, and if he disagrees with the terms even after we provide the necessary details, tell him it will affect the fire country's budding relationship with demon country. And offer his wife a whole set of our latest fashion line. That should convince her to make her husband choose wisely. I am sure it won't come to that. Everything is legal and perfect. If he doesn't pass the petition, he will lose face. Any self-respecting daimyo will agree. And I know that the daimyo is a good person. That he is. That's why I want this to be quick. I want this petition passed before the daimyo's fool of a grandson is made his successor. I have confirmed that the next daimyo is secured tightly under Danzo's pocket. It will be done. I'll leave today itself. Good. Thanks, Chris. Hey, what are friends for? As Chris left, Naruto stood up to leave the office as well. At the reception, he met Josh, the receptionist. How's it going, boss? Josh asked with a wave. Good. So you free for a drink tonight? Sure, we'll meet at the Devil Palace at ten. I heard they had a new dancer there. Josh said with a giggle at the thought of the dancer. Sure dude. Devil Palace it is. Oh, and invite the guys, haven't seen them in a while. Sure thing, boss man. As he stepped outside, another one of his secretaries was waiting for him. Kazama Yoshii was a blonde man with blue-green eyes and was AI's cousin. Naruto sama, we need your approval for testing the new card design. Ensin was looking for your opinion on the latest design for the iPhone as well. He said that the developers came up with some amazing ideas. I'll send two clones with Yoshii. I have some personal matters that I need to attend at the moment. Alright Naruto sama. Naruto created two clones and sent them with Yoshii. Oh, and Yash, we're meeting up at the Devil Palace at ten. Think you can make it? Sure, why not? Alright then. By Naruto vanished in a shanshin. He appeared home. Despite being the owner of the Yuzu Enterprise, Naruto lived with Kaishiro in a very simple yet beautiful home. Yuzu Enterprise was the main industrial foundation of the demon country. They manufactured most of their electronics, motor vehicles, new technologies, computerized security, architecture, weapons manufacture. This was limited and well-hidden, and a chain of restaurants and hospitals, academies were all either owned or supported by the Yuzu Enterprise. And Naruto was the head of it all. I mean, the guy used a ten thousand shadow clone to learn anything and everything he desired. Two months after his banishment, more like betrayal, Naruto found himself captured by the Akatsuki. Naruto had lost the will to fight, and he for the first time in his life, just gave up. QB was roaring in his seal about how Naruto was a weak fool. Anyway, the Akatsuki extracted the biju but it didn't go like they planned. As they started extracting the biju chakra, Naruto felt a surge of defiance. He couldn't just go down like this, but it was too late. So he did the only thing he could do. Went inside the seal and ripped it off. The demonic chakra that surged was beyond control and QB was fighting for control, but Naruto persevered. Even with the QB, they had no chance of escaping as their chakra was lost as soon it was released. Naruto somehow regained control and then did what he thought was the most stupid thing ever, but oh well, it worked out in the end. He gathered all the biju chakra and promptly pushed it into the statue containing all other bijus, in one go. The result was explosive. The statue obliterated taking some of the Akatsuki with it. When Naruto woke up next, he was being treated by a handsome redheaded dude, who he had never met before. And that's how he met Kaishiro. Kaishiro was the QB and during the explosion, all biju lost their biju chakra, which was what made them different from ordinary demons. Without it, they were just demons. And all the chakra from the biju had entered Naruto turning him into a biju. But unlike other bijus who had been driven mad by their power, Naruto's Uzumaki chakra with the natural ability to suppress biju chakra, made sure to purify the chakra in Naruto, and in the end Naruto became a biju equal in power to the jubi with full control of his power. Naruto was then introduced to the rest of the biju turned demon and the Akatsuki, or what remained of it. Itachi, Dietera, Nagato and Conan were the only ones who survived. Naruto somehow convinced them to join him. The group of fourteen became a team after that. They now knew that achieving world peace was a fool's dream, but they could make a place where those who wanted peace could live freely, and that's how Demon Country came into existence. Four months after the Akatsuki ended, they had traveled the world. Along the way, they found many clans, civilians and shinobi who wanted to escape the fights. The group of fourteen became inadvertently became known as the Guardians of Peace, by helping those who needed it. Demon Country was created with much difficulty, but in the end they did it. It took two long years of hard work, but in the end they all created a home for those who wanted peace. Every citizen in Demon Country was told about the demons that lived within the country, before they joined so if they had any problems, they were free to go. Each citizen had a seal on them, that kept track of them and if they somehow found themselves in a sticky situation outside the village they could activate the seal and transport themselves and one passenger, back to the village. It sort of worked like a one-way Horatio seal. Spring, wave, tea, rice countries and sand village became their allies. Of course Naruto knew each of the leaders personally. The Demon Country Daimyo was Uzumaki Hana, a sixty-year-old pure-blooded Uzumaki female, they had found during their travels. They had found many remaining Uzumaki who had come with them. They had never planned on making Demon Country into a shinobi village, but they needed a defense force and income. So instead, they created the Guardian Force, a sort of police force. All of them had ninja training and insured law. They also take missions like bodyguard missions, carrier missions and such. But strictly avoided assassination and such missions. Itachi was the head of the Guardian Force. Naruto was chosen at first, but he refused saying that he wanted to study instead. The next four years Naruto spent, studying architecture from Tizuna, technology from the scientists at Spring Country, sealing and Kenjutsu from the Uzumaki, medical ninjutsu from the Kazama Clan, a clan that was known for their healing abilities, demon techniques from the nine Bijuu, Senjutsu from another clan called Yamikaze. With the help of shadow clones Naruto had mastered each of them in four years. It also helped that he had unlimited chakra and his brain activity was increased exponentially by the Bijuu Chakra. The fifth year was the birth of the Yuzu Enterprise, with Naruto as its head. All this time Konoha had suffered. But Naruto didn't really hold a grudge. That changed when he found out a particular piece of information. When they had banished him, they said that if he ever put foot inside the Fire Country, he would be executed. Everything he owned in Konoha was to be liquidated and added to the village funds. At that time he didn't understand the need of such a rule, after all the only thing he owned was the shabby apartment. He only understood their ploy two years later, when one of his spies informed him about the Uzumaki Clan funds. As the last Uzumaki, the fund was supposed to be given to him once he reached an age of eighteen, but he never got the chance, and they had made sure of that. The clan fund was added to their pockets. Also the council found out about his Namake's heritage, it was Itachi who informed him about his parents, and so they took the Namake's clan funds as well. The money was not the problem, but the fact that they did it, Naruto was livid. Then he found out how Jiraya had taught Sasuke the Ruzengen. What right did that bastard have to learn Naruto's father's original jutsu? That day, he decided Konoha will pay. The irony was that, it was Kaishiro who calmed Naruto down from going on a rampage. The Kubi no Kitson had to calm his ex-jailer from leveling the village. In the end Naruto decided that Konoha was not worth it. And somewhere along the way Naruto fell in love with Kaishiro. The next five years was the rise of the Demon Country. And now Konoha wanted Naruto. Naruto would have left them alone, but now that they came for him, the one thing that came to his mind was that, it was Konoha's fate. Well, everything went okay. Asuma said with a sigh. They had been half expecting Naruto to kick them out.
Yeah. He is still a naive idiot. Sakura said. Hn, dope, but we have to admit. Naruto is some big deal here, I mean look at what all he could. Apparently this hotel Mirage is the best tourist hotel in the village. You need exclusive permission to get a room here. And he managed to get us each a room. Ino said in amazement. Yeah. I remember the Anikich saying that Naruto was much respected here. Karina said. But he's just an architect. Sakura scoffed. Not just any architect Sakura. I asked the hotel staff. Apparently this entire hotel is Naruto's creation. Tenten said. You got to be kidding me. Ino said. Yeah, he designed this amazing place. Sakura said in amazement. Heh. But he is still just a dope. Kiba said with a scoff. Actually Inazuka, Naruto-san is often requested by high-ranking officials from many countries to design their homes, including palaces for Daimyos. Whoa. Kiba gasped when Niji said that. He must make a fortune out of this then. Ino wondered. He does. Shikamaru answered lazily. It would be beneficial to have him in our ranks. Karina said. When will the dope come? Does he plan on keeping us waiting? Kiba growled. Their guides had informed them that Naruto will be coming here to have dinner with them. And now they were waiting for him in this grand room. Right then the large double doors opened and Naruto entered, flanked by guards on either side. Everyone except Sakura felt their jaws drop. That sex god was Naruto. Hey guys. Naruto greeted with a nervous grin and removed his sunglasses to give then a view of the sapphires he called eyes. Naruto. They all chorused in surprise. Sakura jumped out of her seat and went to hug him, but the guard stopped her. I am his friend. She glared at the guards. Sakura, just let it be. Naruto said softly. He then sat down at the table with all of them. The guards still standing on each side. Kakashi gave a hard stare at the guards. Maybe the Anikich arranged them so that they could keep Naruto here. After all they would lose an expert with connections if Naruto left. So Naruto trailed of nervously. Hey Naruto, how's it going? Kakashi said with an eye smile. And he saw Naruto relax with a sigh, maybe he had been expecting them to be angry or something. They conversed while they ate. Hey Naruto, I saw some ninjas from other villages here. Is there some kind of function going on? Tenten asked. Naruto looked confused. Huh? Oh that. You don't know about the scholarships. The what? They asked confused. You see we have academies here in Demon Country. Academies for architecture, medical training, combat training, electronics, mechanics and such. Everyone's eyes widened. And you teach them to people from other villages? Why? They could use it against you. Well, it's really to encourage interaction between people from other villages. Every year exams are held in each village. The top ten students from each exam are allowed to learn at an academy. Each academy takes in one hundred students each year. Forty students are from our village, the rest from foreign villages. It doesn't matter if the student is a ninja or not. That's stupid. Your village could be at risk. Why? Why would they attack us when we are willing to share our knowledge and facilities with them? They know that we have no intention of ever becoming a ninja village, so attacking us will only serve to destroy a village that is beneficial to them. So in exchange for the knowledge we share, they give us protection. They all looked at Naruto dumbfounded. And it's not like we don't have any defenses. Our guardian force is there for law enforcement. Guardian forces. Yeah, I've heard of them. They're just ninjas who don't kill. Kiba scoffed. We are a peaceful village Kiba, killing will only be problematic. It is not that they can't kill, but that they don't want to. Naruto shrugged. They resumed their dinner. Naruto was well aware of how Sasuke was ogling him. He could already imagine what was going through the man's mind. Naruto sama, you have a meeting in half an hour one of the guards said. Oh? It's already nine thirty. I am sorry guys, I have a meeting to attend to. So when will you be leaving? Who are you meeting dope? Sasuke asked annoyed, feeling possessive bastard. Yanarakuun, can't you just skip the meeting to spend some time with your friends? Sakura asked sadly. Sorry guys, I can't miss it. There's some very important people, more important than any of you to me, and I don't want to disappoint them. Hn. Will you guys be leaving soon? Naruto asked. They looked confused at this. Yetamaro. We need to go back to the village. But aren't you coming with us? No. I have some documents that need to be finalized before coming to Konoha. You know paperwork about the banishment, and such. I have to finalize it with the Demon Country Daimyo, and the Fire Country Daimyo. He finished with a groan. They all chuckled at his expression. A certain someone licked his lips in anticipation. Once the dope comes back to Konoha, he'll make sure that Naruto will be his. Good to have you back Naruto. Naruto just smiled and left the dining room. He had a meeting at the Devil Palace to attend, few days later. It's done. Yes, it is. Here are the documents. Good. Tell the people to start mining as soon as possible. Be as discreet as possible. Naruto smiled indulgently. Chris chuckled. I will transfer the ownership of the properties into your name tomorrow just in case they decide to complicate things. Alright. And what about the other properties? All done. It was easy to convince the Daimyo especially when his wife was vehemently against disappointing you. Naruto chuckled. Konoha just lost the treasures they didn't even knew they had all along. Chris chuckled as well. Will you be going there? Yes. After all I want to see what became of my dear sweet village. Naruto walked away from Chris with a smirk. In Konoha, sometime later. Hey guys, Naruto's here. Sakura and Sasuke paused from their spar to look at Ino who had yelled out. Really? He didn't even send any message. Sakura said surprised. They had expected him to at least inform them. Maybe he planned a surprise. Kakashi said. Yeah. That's probably it. Come on Sasuke kun, let's go meet the baka. The villagers stared. Could anyone blame them? I mean walking in front of them was the same boy they had kicked out of their village. Only difference was that now the boy had grown into what can only be called an Adonis, and the villagers knew that they needed the boy's help. It has been one week after the announcement that Naruto will be coming back to the village. The villagers had protested at first, but the Hokage and the council, even the ones who had actively participated in banishing Naruto, had given a speech on how badly they needed Naruto. So the villagers grudgingly had to agree. Naruto kun. Sakura exclaimed in surprise. It seemed like Naruto gets more and more beautiful every time she see him. There he stood, flanked by his loyal bodyguards on each side. Hey Naruto waved not that much enthusiastic. Sakura frowned but ignored it thinking that he was just tired from the journey, or something. He was wearing gray V-neck underneath a black tuxedo jacket, left open. Along with relaxed blue jeans and black sneakers. She moved forward to hug him, while Sasuke stood ogling the beautiful man. But before she could, the bodyguard stepped in front, stopping her from even touching their lord. After all Kaishiro had specifically instructed not to let any Konoha scum touch his mate. Sakura growled at the guards. So did Sasuke. But imagine their surprise when Naruto only smirked at them, and not made any move to make the guards move. So, is the Hokage Tower still where I remember? I want to get all of this out of my way as soon as possible. Naruto said bored. Sakura was confused by the change in behavior. But ignored it in favor of leading the blonde to the tower. Naruto Uzumaki, you have been summoned by the council. Spoke the Ambo who appeared in front of the blonde. Naruto smirked thinking of what will follow. Naruto stood outside the council chambers of Konoha. As soon as news reached that he had returned, the council summoned him for a meeting. As the council called for Naruto to enter, Naruto entered with his head kept high and a neutral expression, his trusted bodyguards close behind. He was disgusted seeing the many lustful and greedy looks from most of the civilian, and some of the shinobi council, but he managed to keep the disgust out of his expression and voice. Welcome back Naruto. Naruto turned to look at Tsunade who had a smile on her face. Seriously. She was a shinobi, she should have known that he won't remain that naive fool after all they had done to him, but he supposed she also believed the lies he spewed at Sakura. How foolish of them. His reply to the warm welcome was a simple nod with a blank face. Some of the council, especially the honorable Hokage was surprised by the lack of emotion he had shown. As far as they knew, he was happy to be back in Konoha, but they ignored it as him being nervous and trying to hide it. There was a long-drawn awkward pause with the council now being a little confused on what to say to the beautiful youth that looked emotionless except for the boredom he occasionally showed. It was Danzo who started. So Uzumaki san, now that you are back, we will integrate you back into the Konoha shinobi roster as soon as possible, and you can start your training to get back into shape. You do not need to worry about your companies as the council will be taking over as the head of them, and will be managing them for you. Naruto almost rolled his eyes, how greedy can they get? But he merely lifted an eyebrow at the suggestion. You can do that? The mild amusement must have thrown them off, because they looked surprised. Danzo narrowed his eyes. Of course, now that you are a part of Konoha. I am a part of Konoha? Since when? This time his amusement was clear to even the most oblivious of them. Naruto, your lawyer has all the paperwork completed. Tsunade said confused. Really now? Why did they ever make you the Hokage? Naruto shook his head disappointed. Tsunade was surprised and hurt. W what are you dash? Hokage sama. He neatly cut her off mid-speech. My lawyer only processed the papers that removed my ban on entering the Fire Country, and the one against me owning any properties on the Fire Country. I believe he never processed any papers regarding the reinstatement of my Konoha citizenship, or my integration back into your shinobi troops. Tsunade was wide-eyed for a moment, but then smiled. This caused Naruto to raise an eyebrow in question. Oh Naruto, you and your pranks. Tsunade chuckled and the whole council followed suit, thinking this a prank from the notorious prankster. Naruto could only suppress a sigh at their stupid ignorance. Then Tsunade continued. Your lawyer had told me that the papers for your integration back into Konoha could only be finished once you are here and had the approval of your current Daimyo, which is the Daimyo of the Demon Country. I assume you have the papers with you now, so give them to me and I'll sign them off. Your prank did catch me off-guard. Naruto's only reaction was to look at the woman like she had lost her mind. He again said. Why did they ever make you the Hokage? I have no papers with me and I have no intention of joining Konoha. Then he smirked at the wide-eyed council. Naruto, the prank's over now, give me the papers. Tsunade said seriously. This time it was Naruto who chuckled, he was thoroughly amused by the foolish humans. It took a while for the council members to figure out that Naruto was indeed not pranking them. Why did you come back if you had no intention of staying? A teary-eyed Hokage asked. A good question. Naruto said but didn't answer her. Well. Answer me. Tsunade yelled. Naruto stood unfazed by the rage of the legendary Sanmin. Even his bodyguards didn't bat an eyelash at what was the most frightening situation to the rest of the council. Even Danzo was slightly shaken by the monstrous-looking woman. The bodyguards knew well that their master had no need for protection, the simple act of having bodyguards made others underestimate Naruto. Their only job was to do the jobs that they found beneath Naruto, which included most jobs as according everyone in Demon Country, Naruto was a divine being and most things were beneath him and no matter how much Naruto protested that wouldn't change. Why should I? Naruto asked amused. You are not my kage, nor are you my daimyo so why should I? You're not even someone I care or respect even slightly about. Tsunade took a step back shocked, the Hokage's chair clattered to the ground as she bumped into it. The council was very much nervous and some were outright angered by the disrespect shown by the demon to the Hokage. Show us respect you demon. An outraged council member shouted. Demon? On what basis do you call me a demon? Naruto asked very amused. Naruto's amusement was really starting to be annoying to the council. We all know about the Kubi. A jealous councilwoman sneered. So don't try to fool us, and that is the only reason we bought you back, because the only thing you're good at is being a weapon. And Naruto laughed, and it was a sweet melodious sound even when it was mocking. I own the biggest company in the entire Elemental Nations. I am the most sought-after architect in the Elemental Nations, not to mention the most popular designer. Who do you all think the famed Golden Fox is? And you say all I am good at is being a weapon? Naruto really enjoyed the surprise and disbelief. He was careful not to reveal his other professions like his achievements in nanotech or pharmaceuticals. Konoha might start a war just to destroy him, if they know. So even though he enjoyed putting them back in their place, he toned it down. And as for the council, utter disbelief was what happened. No way that the Black Rose which was termed the biggest company in Elemental Nations belonged to the demon. No way that he was the Golden Fox, the designer with such high talents, that the royalties fought over him. There was just no way. But they couldn't ignore the obvious clues like how Black Rose never opened any of their branches in Fire Country. Because if they did, anything that belonged to Naruto would have been confiscated by the council. And never had the Golden Fox boutiques ever opened in Konoha when there were many boutiques in every other nation. They had already known about the architect part, and it took them a very long time to believe that. There is no way. You are lying demon. The sane councilwoman screeched in a way similar to the pink-haired monstrosity. Come to think of it, she had that particular shade of green eyes as well. But Naruto didn't care. Suit yourself. Naruto shrugged. Oh and just so you know, I'm not a ginchuriki anymore either. What? Naruto shrugged once more. The Akatsuki extracted him. But but you would have died during the extraction. Tsunade was shocked. I am an Uzumaki. He said. That made a lot of sense to Tsunade and some of the shinobi council, but really didn't make any sense to the civilian council and Naruto really didn't care to elaborate. Why do you being an Uzumaki have anything to do with it? A clueless council member asked and Naruto didn't even acknowledge the question. So the Akatsuki have all the demons? Tsunade asked terrified. No. Naruto sighed. He was really getting tired of the whole ordeal, he just wanted to get out of Konoha once he had done what he needed to. They couldn't contain all nine demons and the statue used to contain them exploded and the Akatsuki died. I got saved by my lover and now I live happily with him. End of story. I am leaving. With that Naruto left the stunt council to process what he had just said. The council had a lot of questions, surprisingly, or perhaps not, the main question among the male members was who the lucky man who snagged the beautiful youth was. The females were equally disappointed that he was taken, by a man too no less. They more that hoped that he was bi and not gay or just experimenting, either would do. Tsunade was the one who asked the question that everyone forgot, was he telling the truth? Most of them had the decency to look sheepish at having forgotten to think of that during their plans to somehow make the blonde there. He was. Hayashi Huga said. I checked his chakra coil, he had no Bijuu Chakra at all. And he wasn't lying, there were no fluctuations in his chakra coil as he spoke. Unknowns to them Naruto long since attained the ability to fool the Bukugan and any human experts in deception. That was the reason that the Bukugan only saw a small part of his normal blue human chakra and not the ten tails of golden chakra he got after becoming the Jubi. I also checked, he wasn't lying about anything. Even more proof, his whisker marks are gone. Innoichi Yamanaka the interrogation expert said. The council was stunned that the most powerful man in Elemental Nations, money and influence-wise, had just slipped out of their grasps, just like that. Not like they had any chance to make him stay from the beginning. Now they understood why the fire Daimyo had been eager to remove Naruto's banishment after all he too had a wife who was a fan of the Golden Fox, and the Daimyo himself had been trying to get Naruto to build him a new mansion for a while now, and had been probably denied because Naruto couldn't enter the Fire Country. That was no longer the case. Troublesome Shikaku said and the whole council agreed. Naruto sat in the small restaurant idly sipping his black coffee. The restaurant was owned by a man who had been a part of the mob that had beaten Naruto when he was younger more than once. Now Naruto was sitting there enjoying watching the man fidgeting before him. News was yet to leak out about Naruto's decision at the council chamber to leave Konoha. So even now the civilians were trying their hardest to get into the blonde's favor so that he would stay in Konoha. Naruto hummed inaudibly, the coffee was okay, but it paled in comparison to the one Kaishiro made, or even the one Akira made. Anything else sir? The young woman in a maid costume asked with a sultry smile and bent to show more than necessary cleavage. Naruto simply stared at the woman, a stare which unnerved her. The woman fidgeted under his gaze and his glare intensified. The woman took a step back in fright wondering if he would attack her. At some concentrated Kai to the mix and the woman ran for the hill, causing Naruto to chuckle amused. His guards were astonished at his actions, although they perfectly understood his reasons for hating every single Konoha inhabitant, but this was the first time they or anyone in the Demon Country had seen this almost sadistic side of Naruto. Because to them Naruto was the kind young lord who always protected them and had a solution to all their problems. They couldn't but shake their heads in amusement as well. Being Naruto's personal bodyguards whenever Naruto left the Demon Country, they were close enough to know of Naruto's past and decisions. They knew that Naruto had chosen to forget his revenge on Konoha and move on. But now, Konoha themselves tried to insert back into his life and had ignited the fire that Naruto had vanquished long ago. So now Konoha had made an enemy that is unbeatable. Naruto stood up with a sigh, his coffee no longer interesting. He could feel an annoying presence approaching, no doubt in order to question him about his words to the council. He thought about going the other way to avoid confrontation, but then again, he had nothing else to do and was bored, so maybe it would be good entertainment. He took some money out of his wallet, and left it on the table. Oh no, no Naruto-san, the coffee is on the house. After all you have returned home after so long. The manager, the very same man who enjoyed beating him when he was younger, said with a smile. I always amazed Naruto how ignorant humans can be, especially people from Konoha. Maybe the excessive yokai during the Kubi attack had eroded their brain capacity, or something. How did they even expect him to want to stay one moment in this village that was the embodiment of the torture he endured over the years? You think I don't remember you? Naruto asked quietly, making the manager panic. The manager had hoped that the boy had forgotten what he had done. I don't know why. Naruto didn't let the stuttering man finish. I remember. I remember everything you did. Everything all of you did to me. Keep in mind, I hold no love for this village or anyone in this village. And I don't plan on staying in this disgusting village. Naruto's cold words were clear to everyone in the restaurant, and they gaped at the boy's audacity. How dare the demon? After all they had done to make him feel better. The manager's smile turned into a sneer and he was about to retort very angrily when an angry and distressed uchiha burst, literally, since he broke down the doors in his hurry, into the restaurant. Sasuke uchiha was very distraught. The Akatsuki was gone. His brother was dead. His revenge was meaningless. All these years worth of hard work, hard work to him that is. After all, all he ever did was copy what he thought was necessary with his cursed eyes, wasted. Now he won't even get his brother's eyes, which he needed to be able to use the eternal mangekyo sharingan, all because of the dope. Well it was not exactly the blonde's fault, even Sasuke knew that. But Sasuke was angry and he needed to vent and Naruto just happened to be available. The people in the restaurant looked at the uchiha bewildered and then bowed in respect, entirely dismissing the fact that he just broke the door down, except the manager who trying to figure a way to blame this on the demon so that he could get some money in the name of repercussions. Dope is it true that all Sasuke remembered was going to the blonde in order to grab him by the neck so that he could get some answers? The next thing he knew, he was getting acquainted with the tiled floor which cracked as his face met with it. The onlookers were surprised seeing their precious uchiha get slammed to the ground like an amateur by one of the blonde's bodyguards while the other stood protectively in front of the blonde. The others were feeling very grateful that they hadn't attempted the same thing earlier even if they felt like teaching the blonde a lesson. Sasuke glared at the black-suited man looking down at him from his black sunglasses. His sharingan flared to life and to his utter surprise it flared out just as quickly.[1534.81] Unknown to him the guard was using a medical technique to cut his chakra flow to his eyes, thus deactivating the sharingan. The guard was yet to let go of the downed Uchiha's neck. Throughout all this Naruto stood there with an amused smirk. Sasuke! The pink haired banshee entered and screamed seeing the Uchiha on the ground. She was followed by Kakashi and Sai. Release him this instant! Sakura screamed her hands glowing with green chakra, as she got ready to pound the guard who dared harm Sasuke. The guard didn't move. Kakashi stepped forward with his single eye narrowed. Release Sasuke at once or you will be arrested for violence against a Konoa shinobi. He said with authority. This meant nothing to the guard. A soft chuckle cracked the tension that was permeating the restaurant. Let the Uchiha go, Kirin. Naruto softly said to the black haired bodyguard. Kirin as the guard was now known released the Uchiha instantly, and was by Naruto's side with his red haired counterpart. Sasuke stood up and glared and turned on his sharingan which activated much to his relief. Rei, Kirin we are leaving. Naruto said ignoring the shinobi who were staring at him. Rei, the red haired bodyguard and Kirin. The black haired bodyguard silently followed their leader as he was about to walk out the door, in front of which the shinobi was standing. As Naruto was about to pass by her, Sakura made to grab his hand, this interpreted by Rei. Sakura glared at the guard, she used her super strength to try and force the guard to let her go, but she failed miserably. It seems that the redhead had a level of chakra control that surpassed even Tsunade, and using his chakra perfectly he negated her super strength easily, without it she was not really that strong. Naruto was still amused, Kakashi could see this and he narrowed his eyes at the blonde. Naruto looked at him and smirked. Naruto Kakashi began. You have really changed. Naruto only raised his eyebrow, not really feeling like giving a verbal answer. Is it true? Naruto looked at the Uchiha who asked the question. Is it true that my brother is dead? Your brother? Oh you mean Itachi? You two are so different that I rarely think of him as your brother anymore. And no, he's not dead. Naruto answered casually. Sasuke's eyes widened. But you said that the Akatsuki died extracting the QB from you. Kakashi said remembering what the blonde said at the council meeting. The civilians all gasped, the blonde no longer had the demon? The organization known as Akatsuki is dead. Naruto answered. Where is he? Tell me where Itachi is? Sasuke roared, but he didn't dare attack Naruto again. Naruto scoffed, why should I? I hold no obligations to you or anyone in this pathetic village. Doeb? Sasuke was livid, oh Naruto was going to pay once he became Sasuke's. According to Sasuke's observations he still had a chance with the blonde. Naruto shook his head exasperated, we're leaving. No! Sasuke bit out. Naruto didn't even acknowledge him. Fight me. Sasuke said again. Rei and Kirin tensed expecting the Uchiha to attack their lord. Naruto however was bored and wasn't even acknowledging Sasuke. Are you scared Doeb? Sasuke taunted hoping for a reaction. He was sorely disappointed when he got none. In his anger his chakra swirled in his palm and the Rizengan was spinning within his arms. Naruto who wasn't really interested in thrashing the fool, now anyway, since he had to meet with one of his subordinates, stopped cold when he heard the sound of the familiar jutsu. Find the quiet answer startled Sasuke and his Rizengan dissipated. He gave the dobe a smug look. Are you angry that I learned one of your strongest techniques, Doeb? Sasuke smirked. Oh more that you can imagine, Uchiha? More that you can imagine? Naruto whispered. Rei, informed Subasa to reschedule our meeting to tonight at eight. Rei nodded and vanished like the wind. The onlookers were amazed by the shunshin that left no trace, not even a detectable chakra signature. Sakura looked at Naruto, his anger was going to be his downfall, she thought. She vanished to inform the council about this recent turn of events. Maybe they could somehow twist this in their favor. Naruto saw her leaving and had a pretty good idea where she had gone to. Sai was missing as well, most likely gone to Danzo. Meet me at training ground seven when you're ready. Sasuke said. I am ready. Sasuke stared at the blonde's attire which was definitely not suited for a shinobi battle. Yet if the dobe didn't care why should he? So Sasuke nodded and both moved to the training ground. It came as no surprise to Naruto that there was a crowd already waiting for them at training ground seven. Naruto ignored the teary eyed Hokage. A solemn Jiraya stood next to her. The rest of the council was there as well. His eyes met that of one of his most precious person, not any longer, at least Naruto liked to think so. Yumino Iroka stood staring at the blonde, with guilt ridden eyes. Naruto stared at the man impassively, and the man met Naruto's blue eyes dead on. There were tears, dark bags under dull chocolate eyes and Naruto could see a soul that reeked of pain and guilt, then there was joy. The happiness in the man surprised Naruto, why was he happy? This made Naruto angry. There was only one person, only one person in Konoa that Naruto hated and loved and it was Iroka. Others he was indifferent about. It was Iroka's betrayal that had hurt the blonde the worst. Because Iroka knew him since he was young, knew him long before Tsunade or Jiraya or Kakashi. Understood him more than his so-called comrades at that time. He had a bond with Iroka that almost as deep as the one he had with the Sandeem. And Iroka shattered it with a few choice words. Thinking back on it, Iroka never did as much as others did, Naruto didn't even remember seeing him on the days of his banishment. But Iroka had hurt him more than any other could. Naruto snapped his gaze back to Sasuke who was scowling at the sight of the crowd. Even looking at Iroka brought a stab of pain to his chest. This was the reason he had studiously avoided any news on Iroka over the years. The Uchiha was hoping to get a chance to get intimate with the blonde after he had defeated him. That had become impossible with the crowd present. Sasuke growled angrily. Naruto rolled his eyes at the Uchiha. Shall we? Naruto questioned with a nonchalant air. This managed to successfully piss Sasuke off, his superiority complex not really liking how the blonde wasn't afraid of him. Uzumaki Naruto. Tsunade's voice sounded from a few feet ahead. Naruto fixed her with a bored gaze. Tsunade was still a mess, but she desperately held on to composure. I as the Hokage of Kanahigakur and the honorable council have come to a decision. Naruto raised an eyebrow, thinking on what twisted plan the council cooked up now. Danzo Shimura stepped forward. We have already read through your request to gain you clan inheritance. Both of them. Naruto scoffed at the request part. It is no request Danzo, it is a certified order from the Daimyo. You wish to make changes in that? Naruto smirked. Danzo ignored the blonde's words, we cannot approve of it. In case you didn't notice Danzo, you or your council's approval means nothing to me or the Daimyo. Danzo glared at the blonde. However we plan on arriving at a compromise. Oh, and what would that be? Naruto asked mockingly. This will be considered as an official match for the inheritance of the Namikes and Uzumaki clans. Naruto remained calm. The civilians and some shinobi that were present gasped at the name Namikes. My clan inheritance is my right Danzo. None of you have the power to deny me my right. However, if this helps things go smoothly then I will do it. The council smirked. The blonde will definitely lose to the Uchiha. Since you agree, the other terms shall be revealed. Danzo hid a smirk as he looked at the blonde. Other terms Danzo? Naruto asked. He was entirely amused with the old crone. Yes, you will be fighting the entire previous rookie nine and previous team eleven for your clan rights. Naruto's eyes widened. The council members were thinking that he was scared and they smirked in victory. Naruto however was thinking something entirely different. Oh my! I was waiting for a chance to get even with them. And they give it right to me. How lovely! And if you fail, you will belong to Konoa and all your properties including the ones in other countries will be taken over by the council. You will work for us after that. Hmm interesting. You're all greedy as ever I see. Naruto said not really concerned. Sasuke was smirking to himself, with the power he had on the council forcing the blonde to marry him after that would be piece of cake. And he can get the current husband of the blonde killed. I agree. Naruto smirked, surprising all of them. But most of them pushed it aside as the blonde being overconfident. Then Naruto continued, but I have some conditions of my own. They are? Danzo asked. At Tsunade, Jiraya and the four Jonin Sensei to the group I am fighting. Many gasps were heard at that. Some began getting suspicious but they all believed that the blonde had no chance of winning. And Naruto continued, when I win, I will be taking everything owned by the Namikes and Uzumaki with me. Back to demon country, and there should be no protest against that. Naruto observed the disbelieving and angered looks when he said it like that he was sure of his victory. One more condition, any property I own in Konoa will be outside the jurisdiction of the Hokage or the council after that. I can do whatever I want with them, even build a summer camp for IWA shinobi, and you will do nothing about it. The confidence that Naruto was leaking had set them uneasy. But it was they were the ones that started this so backing down was out of the option. You're being arrogant Uzumaki. Danzo warned. Oh, the entire deal seems one sided doesn't it? So it is only right that I get something more out of this? Or do you fear that I would be able to defeat all of your so-called elites? Naruto asked in mock concern. We agree. Some of the council members shouted fully believing that the blonde will fail. Tsunade nodded her consent as well. Danzo, despite his suspicions were outnumbered and therefore had no chance of stopping this. Naruto smirked, everything was handed to him in a metaphorical silver platter. The fight will be on. Naruto cut Danzo off before he could finish. Oh no, no, no. You think I would fight you just trusting your word that you will do all this if I win? Naruto scoffed. I want all of this in an official document, and it will be sent to the fire and demon Daimyo. The fight will only take place if and only if both Daimyo approve and only in either their own or their representative's presence. I will never ever do the mistake of trusting Konoa again. Naruto said with a smirk. Danzo now knew that the blonde had something planned. If the blonde had any doubt he wouldn't win, he wouldn't have asked for the presence and permission of the Daimyos. This way both parties couldn't back out of the terms of the fight. I will have my lawyer arrive this evening. He will prepare the contract, and once the Hokage approves it will be delivered to the Daimyo. The fight will have to be postponed till everything is ready. Now I have other business to attend to. Naruto walked away with Kirin and Rei, whose presence was a shocker to everyone since no one noticed his arrival. The stunned crowd stood there murmuring among themselves. Most were sure about the outcome of the fight. Only a few felt uneasy with what was happening. One Yumino Iroka smiled at the retreating back of his ex-student. He had a feeling that Konoa had just dug its own grave, and he was more than satisfied to know that Naruto would be the one to bring down Konoa. Konoa deserves anything you give her Naruto. It's time we pay for our crimes. Iroka walked away smiling softly in a very long time. Naruto sama, Subasa has arrived, Rei informed Naruto bowing. Naruto hummed, idly swirling his drink. Send him in. He replied. Rei vanished from sight. A man who looked to be in his early forties walked in. He had light brown hair and dark gray eyes. Naruto sama the man greeted bowing. Naruto nodded with a slight smile. How are things going Subasa? Everything is going according to the plan, Naruto sama. All the properties you wanted are now under my name. We can transfer it to your name as soon you want it. And our spies have located Orochimaru's lab as well. Hmm, I'm good. Naruto sighed. That means I can get out of here as soon as possible. Subasa chuckled. You need not have come at all. We had everything under control. Naruto shrugged. I wanted to pay my dear old friends a visit. Subasa turned serious. The upcoming match between you and those Konoa ninjas have created quite an uproar. Most people are sure that you will lose. Naruto snorted, that's what I am counting on. As long as they believe they'll win, they'll agree to whatever ridiculous terms I come up with. Subasa hummed in agreement. Konoa had no idea what they're getting into. But I believe you let them off easily, Subasa asked Naruto. Naruto chuckled, no you're wrong there. The hooks haven't even taken hold yet. They'll lose a lot more than just their reputation, Subasa I will make sure of it. Naruto smirked slightly sadistic. I'll leave Konoa scarred and battered on her knees. Subasa chuckled hearing his boss. Konoa truly had no idea what's coming. In demon country, enmeme, Konoa is as greedy as ever. Kaishiro chuckled reading the message sent by Konoa. A woman with graying red hair and wise purple eyes pursed her lips in distaste. Those fools have no right to demand anything of my grandchild. Yet they do this. Kaishiro smirked, well, they only dug a deeper hole for themselves. Oh, and I am going to make it much deeper, that they'll never crawl out of it. The woman growled. Kaishiro chan, prepare for a journey. We are going to meet the fire Daimyo. Uzumaki Hibara, the mother of Uzumaki Kushina, grandmother to Uzumaki Naruto and for the last few years, the Daimyo of demon country, stood up and left the room. Her royal blue kimono fluttered as strode out of the room, eyes glowing with the fury of a mother. Kaishiro followed smirking. Per Konoa these two Uzumaki will be their end. That night at Fire Country capital, the fire Daimyo, Kasayama Hizaki trembled with barely concealed fury as he reads through the message from Konoa. Not only have those fools shown the audacity to go against a direct order from him, they also let their greed consume them, and almost made an enemy out of demon country. His eyes met that of the other Daimyo. What do you propose we do Hibara dano? The fire Daimyo questioned. Hmm. My grandson has already agreed to the match. All it needs seems to be our permission. The fire Daimyo nodded gravely. He didn't understand why the boy would agree to such a match. But I believe that the match is quite unfair. Hibara said. That it is Hibara dano. Your grandson against all of them. He was cut off by a soft laugh from Hibara. Oh. That's not what I was implying Hizaki dano. I meant it is unfair in terms of the reward. Don't you think so? The fire Daimyo sat confused. The woman didn't mind her grandson being set up for a match against all of Konoa's strongest shinobi. Was she more worried about the prize? She seemed awfully confident in her grandchild. Hizaki nodded anyway. Yes it is rather unfair when you think about it. Should he win the match? The only thing my grandchild earns is what already belongs to him. But if Konoa wins they receive everything my grandchild has ever worked for. It will leave demon country crippled as Naruto chan owns a vast majority of our economy. Hizaki nodded. Seeing this Hibara continued. It would only be fair that the risks should be equal for both parties involved. Hizaki had as really bad feeling that this would only end badly for Konoa. But they disagreed with his direct order, and they had it coming for some time now. So what do you think should be done, Hibara dano? Hizaki asked seriously. Hibara smirked sadistically. Konoa council meeting room, two days later. The council members and the Hokage bowed in respect to the Daimyos of Fire Country and Demon Country entered the council chambers. Danzo silently cursed. With both Daimyos, present things would get difficult. And that woman, the demon country Daimyo she looked rather familiar. He was now sure that something was wrong. You may rise. The council members raised their heads. The council members waited anxiously for the verdict from both Daimyos. Just then the council doors opened once again, and this time Naruto and Kaishiro entered. The council members were drooling at the sight of the two most handsome men standing together. Naruto and Kaishiro bowed to the Daimyo. Now that we are all here, we can start, Hizaki said. We have read and discussed the message sent by the council, and we have come to a conclusion. Hibara said gaining the attention of the council and shinobi. The match between Naruto Uzumaki and the shinobi of Konoa shall take place. Many of the council members smiled in satisfaction. Only a few noticed that the Daimyo was yet to finish. Only if Konoa agrees to certain terms. Hizaki finished earning some confused frowns. But the terms of the match has already been set, Hizaki sama, Danzo said. We find those terms to be greatly in favor of Konoa. And in a match like this where one party puts so much at risk, it is only fair that both parties take up the same risk. The fire Daimyo said. Danzo didn't like this one bit. The other members of the council were suspicious. What do you suggest Hizaki sama? Tsunade asked. It was Hibara who answered the question. If Naruto wins the match, everything that belongs to the other competitors will belong to Naruto and by proxy under the jurisdiction of demon country. That includes any kind of clans's wealth, compounds and scrolls as well. The reaction was immediate, and explosive. Preposterous! One council member shouted. This is unacceptable. We will not accept this. Silence! Tsunade bellowed silencing the foolish council before they end up angering the Daimyo even further. This decision is final. There is no argument. Only those who agree to these terms shall fight, in the match. Others can forfeit. And if none of them agrees, the match will not take place and Naruto will leave to demon country with everything that rightfully belongs to him in the first place. The fire Daimyo glared at the council, daring them to oppose him. Hizaki sama is this not unfair? Danzo asked breaking the silence. Oh? And how is it fair making a young man fight against all these opponents to gain something he rightfully deserves? How is it fair forcing him to forfeit his entire life's hard work because of your greed? Hizaki asked. That's because he is a monster. The foolish council member did not even finish before as concentrated wave of killing intent choked him. Visions of his death danced before his eyes and the creator of the killing intent refused to allow him the relief of even passing out. Don't you dare insult my grandson! The demonic voice that spoke quietly but poured molten lava across their souls belonged to none other than Uzumaki Hibara the demon country Daimyo. The council members panicked. The only ones not affected by the killing intent was Naruto who looked amused. Kaishiro who had released his own killing intent at the insult to his mate. The fire Daimyo who has been spared of the killing intent. And the guards of both Daimyo who were shielded from the killing intent by Naruto's own comforting aura. After seeing them panic like a headless chicken for some time, Naruto decided to end the tirade. He walked up to his grandmother, placed a hand on her shoulder and kissed her cheek, surprising all of them with his approach towards a Daimyo. When Hibara calmed down and took a deep breath, Naruto walked back towards Kaishiro and took his hand then kissed his palm followed by a mischievous smirk notifying his mate that he was having fun. Kaishiro shook his heads at his mate with a smile, and delivered a chaste kiss to his lips. Those who witnessed the scene were having a hard time controlling their emotions. It was obvious who Naruto's mysterious husband was. It was also obvious that in front of the handsome Kaiga, they have no chance of winning over the blonde's affections. Sasuke who has been present for the meeting, along with the rest of the rookie nine and their teachers, could not control his anger at seeing his dobe kissing someone else who might be the blonde's husband, but Sasuke obviously didn't care about the husband part. He growled under his breath, which Kaishiro and Naruto clearly heard, having super heightened senses and all. Kaishiro narrowed his eyes and pulled Naruto closer to him by the waist and send as taunting smirk at Sasuke. Naruto being Naruto, just smiled innocently and snuggled onto his husband further pissing of Sasuke and many of the council. You two are together? And what do you mean grandson? It was Sakura's voice that broke the council out of staring at the couple. And that's when all hell broke loose. Questions after questions were fired at the Daimyo and the couple from all directions. Naruto, Kaishiro and Hibara were decidedly amused. Silence! There goes Tsunade again. The council settled down slowly. Tsunade then turned to the woman who proclaimed to be her Naruto's grandmother. A relation he had earlier shared with Tsunade now belonged to some other woman. Daimyo or not, Tsunade refused to be replaced in Hrgaki's life. I believe you have some explaining to do Daimyo sama, Tsunade said glaring at the woman. I do? Oh, and why should I bother with explaining anything to you? Hibara asked taunting. Tsunade growled, her anger getting the best of her, but before she could open her mouth another voice cut her off. I suggest you show some respect, Hokage sama. Disrespecting our Daimyo will not bode well for you. Naruto's calm voice saddened Tsunade. He was supposed to be Hrgaki, how could he defend this woman? She looked at him sadly. Naruto continued, and I will answer your questions, no need to bother my grandmother. Yes, she is my grandmother, Uzumaki Kushina's mother to be more precise. Recognition flashed in Tsunade's eyes. Uzumaki Hibara but she had died during the destruction of Whirlpool hadn't she? And even if she was alive, where was she for the first twelve years of his life? She came back after twelve years into the life of the child she abandoned and was welcomed with love, whereas she, Tsunade, was kicked out? Tsunade narrowed her eyes at the woman. She obviously abandoned you for most of your life Naruto, how can you even think of loving her when you hate us? Tsunade asked. Abandoned me? Naruto scoffed. And he was further angered when he saw the sadness in his grandmother's eyes. He knew Hibara still blamed herself for not being there for him. The only one who abandoned me was you people. Grandmother was in a coma for two years after the village's destruction. Being the queen of the Whirlpool village, the people who wanted the destruction of Whirlpool were after her, so my mother with father's help treated her in secret. Impossible. I would have known if such as thing had happened. I am a top medic, Kushina would have contacted me. She is lying to you Naruto. She is lying to you, Naruto. Fool mother did try to contact you. In fact, she begged you to come back. But you didn't. Drowning in your sorrow, you abandoned the people who still needed you. Now Tsunade remembered. Kushina had sent letters after letters asking her to come back, not specifying the reason due to security problems. And just like Naruto said, Tsunade has ignored all of them. Naruto continued then when she did recover from the coma, she was informed that her daughter, son-in-law and their unborn child had perished in the Kyubi attack. She requested to see the Kyubi Jinchuriki, but was denied because according to the council the Jinchuriki was safely living with his parents, and his identity was made secret for safety reasons. Naruto glared at the council as he said this. They all sweated when they saw the shimmering anger in his eyes. She left the village after that. Hadn't been in contact with any Konoha Shinobi and lived in a non-Shinobi village for thirteen years, before I found her. She is my grandmother, grandniece of Mido Uzumaki, and the former queen of the Whirlpool. The council fell silent. If this was true, then Naruto was also the heir to the Daimyo of Demon Country A S N D, the whole Whirlpool Island. The power Naruto held was beyond what they could imagine. And for your other questions, yes, Kaishiro is my husband. We married when I turned eighteen, that was four years ago. And yes, he is the Demon Country Kaiga. And as for the match, I agree with the terms. If any of the competitors have any problem accepting them, you can forfeit. No one is forcing you to fight. But if you agree to the match, you will have to comply with the terms. So anyone who thinks that they'll lose and doesn't want to risk their wealth is free to forfeit. Naruto finished calmly. The council was mulling over the new information. If all of this was true, having Naruto would give them a major power boost and they would undoubtedly become the strongest Shinobi village. They had to have Naruto. Naruto's eyes were cold and emotionless. But when they met the cold black eyes of the last loyal Uchiha of Konoha as taunting glint entered them. Sasuke grit his teeth when he saw Naruto looking at him. Like hell he would forfeit against the blonde. Naruto would belong to him whether he liked it or not. I agree with the terms. I am not afraid to face the dobe. Just because he has a powerful family doesn't mean that he is strong enough to beat me. The Uchiha scoffed and gave as condensing smirk to Naruto. This caused a rise in confidence for the rest of the competitors. I agree. Me too. Yeah, I agree. We will get you back, Naruto. I agree as well. Bring it on. Get ready to lose, Naruto. I and Akamaru will wipe the floor with you. Murmurs of agreement broke out among the competitors. Naruto skillfully hid the smirk that threatened to break out. Well done Sasuke, well done. But the next group of answers surprised all of them. We forfeit. Naruto gazed at Niji and Hinata in surprise. Looking into their eyes, he knew that they didn't quit because they were afraid of defeat. May I just ask why? Naruto asked seriously. The rest of the council looked at the duo in anger, Hayashi, and surprise. Naruto-san, on that Chunin exam years ago, you helped me open my eyes. I understand that you love your life in Demon Country. We have wronged you Naruto-san, and we deserve your anger and hatred. I want your forgiveness, but fighting you in order to force you from a life you clearly love is not the way to ask for forgiveness. But they are all stubborn in their beliefs and uncle had forced us to participate. But in the presence of the Daimyo and given the option to forfeit, I can express my true opinion. I do not wish to fight you Naruto-san, especially for a cause that would hurt you. I hope you forgive me for my actions. I was wrong and ignorant. Naruto was surprised by the mini-speech given by the normally stoic Niji, and was even more surprised by the sincerity. But he stayed silent and emotionless. And you? Were you not determined to get me back earlier? Naruto asked Hinata, seemingly unfazed by Niji's apology. My reasons are the same, Naruto. I understand that you are happy where you are. I do not want to separate you from those you love. We have already hurt and betrayed you. I will not do it again. The determination and the lack of stutter were a pleasant surprise. Hinata! Niji! I order you to fight this match, or you will be expelled from the clan. I will not let you disrespect the clans in such as way. Hayashi said with a glare. No. And we are ready to face any punishment for our actions. Niji and Hinata said with conviction. Hayashi growled. Then you both are banished and I will put the seal on you Hinata. You are no heir of mine, you failure. Enough! Hayashi looked wide-eyed at the Daimyo. I gave the competitors the opportunity to quit, and they did. Banishing them from the clans because of that decision is uncalled for. Everyone was surprised. Hayashi growled silently. Most people then knew that his next course of action would be to put the caged bird seal on Hinata and make both their lives living hell. Then my daughter Hanabi will be participating in the match instead of these two disgraces, Hayashi said garnering their attention. Hisaki looked thoughtful and then he looked at Naruto. The decision rests with you Naruto-san. Naruto looked at Hayashi who was glaring daggers at Niji and Hinata, and then he looked back at the Daimyo. I agree. Then it shall be. Hanabi Hyuga will fight in the match instead of Niji Hyuga and Hinata Hyuga. Naruto looked at Hayashi and the two Hyuga that stood tall and unmoving despite the murderous glint in their leader's eyes. Naruto turned his gaze towards his grandmother. She could see the thoughts running through his mind. With a subtle nod from Naruto, Hibara sprung the next trap. If I remember Hisaki-dano, slavery seals are banished in the Fire Country, and as far as I know, the Hyuga Caged Bird Seal is a modified slavery seal. Hibara said with a smirk. The Fire Daimyo was surprised and furious. Is this true Hokage-dano? Hisaki asked Tsunade. I am afraid it is. But the Hokage have no right to involve in clans's matters. Tsunade said defeated. What is the need of Askaga if you have no power over your own people Tsunade? This matter will be further investigated, and if it is true, the Hyuga Clan shall pay the price for using a slavery seal. Now that the matter of the match is decided, and all others except Niji and Hinata have decided to fight. The match shall take place in a week's time at the Chunin Exam Stadium. In the meantime, I will have the Hyuga matter investigated. Tsunade bowed her head ashamed. Hayashi was having a mental meltdown. If the Daimyo does investigate the matter, the Hyuga Clan will be in trouble. The rest of the council nervously sat as the Daimyo and their guards exited, followed by Naruto and Kaishiro. But before they left Sasuke decided to open his mouth. Doob, you know that if you lose you will be under the complete control of the council. And if the council decides that you should leave your current husband and have to marry someone else, you will have to do it. He said smirking. Naruto raised an eyebrow. Mm-hmm. Doesn't matter really. It's not like I am going to lose. He exited the room with a smirk, leaving behind a furious group of people. Konoha's end has begun, starting with the Hyuga Clan. Naruto was thinking about the upcoming fight when a familiar chakra signature was outside his room. Naruto tensed as the door opened. Naruto. Naruto narrowed his eyes at the man he once viewed as a big brother. Why would his guards let Irohka enter when they knew that he didn't want to see the man? Yumino-san Irohka was hurt by the dispassionate tone and he gave a bitter smile. Do you still hate me Naruto? Naruto raised an eyebrow. Don't you already know my answer, Yumino-san? Irohka was already messing with his attitude. His very presence was making Naruto agitated. Will you listen to me once Naruto? After all, I was once your big brother. Irohka asked in a calm yet sad voice. Big brother? Naruto slammed his hands on the table as he stood up. What are you playing at, Irohka? He didn't yell, but he was angry. Irohka smiled and then he chuckled. You're still so easy to rile up, Naruto. You are still the same. Irohka said between chuckles. No, Yumino-san. I can safely say that I am not the fool that I was back then. Naruto said scowling and he turned away from Irohka. The person whose betrayal he still couldn't get over. No, Naruto. You were never a fool to begin with. I know that you are still the kind-hearted stubborn blonde who would fight the entire world for his precious people. I always saw through that mask you wore Naruto. That idiot mask you kept up to protect yourself. Naruto's eyes widened but he didn't turn around to see Irohka's face. He didn't need to see his face to know that he was telling the truth. Irohka continued speaking. It didn't take me long to figure out that I was one of the only two people who saw through that mask. Naruto had nothing to say. He couldn't speak. He had always been proud of his mask back then, because he believed that no one saw through it. But now Irohka is saying that two people saw through it. He had a guess who the second person was. The second person was the Sandame. Irohka said confirming his guess. We knew you were suffering but we couldn't do anything in fear of pushing you away. Naruto closed his eyes he didn't want to hear anymore. But he had no strength to stop Irohka. Some part of him wanted to know, wanted to hear some form of explanation from Irohka. Day by day I watched as you faded, and despite all I had done you never did trust me enough to drop your mask in front of me. It hurt, but I understood when the Chunin exams were near. I was very worried about you. I found out about how Kakashi was neglecting you and how your teammates treated you but I never got the chance to change any of that before everything began crumbling down. Why are you telling me all this? What are you trying to prove? Naruto asked. I am not trying to prove anything Naruto. But now that you're here with me again, I want you to know everything Naruto. Maybe I'll get my little brother back. Naruto scoffed. You're way over your head, Irohka. Get out. I don't want to listen to you anymore. No, Naruto. I won't leave until you listen to me. Give me a chance Naruto, please. Naruto closed his eyes, and prayed tell why should I give you a chance? You made it pretty clear what you thought of me, that day, Irohka. I don't want to give you or this godforsaken village a chance at anything. Naruto felt Irohka's anger build even before Irohka exploded. Don't lump me in with the rest of this disgusting village Naruto. Naruto turned around to look at Irohka a little surprised. Give me a chance Naruto. Just listen to me once. Naruto sat back down in his chair impassively. His eyes meeting Irohka's head on. I ask again, Yumino-san. Why should I? Because I fucking deserve a chance Naruto, Irohka said. Irohka was tired, so drained from all the years of agony he went through. Naruto sighed. He knew he shouldn't do this, make the man leave this instant because even if Naruto wanted to hate this man, he never could. Listening to whatever he said would only crumple his resolve further. But his instincts told him to listen, and he trusted his instincts. Naruto tilted his head back in the chair so that he was facing the ceiling. If it makes any difference, I am no longer a part of Konoha. Not even its citizen. Naruto turned his head to face Irohka in surprise. And for the first time since the man entered Naruto clearly looked at Irohka. The lack of a headband was glaring difference. It only proved how much attention Naruto had given the man before. He knew how passionate Irohka was about Konoha. Konoha is the village that his parents had died protecting, the village that he swore to protect with his life. Irohka embraced the will of Fire with all he had and now Irohka was no longer a Konoha ninja. Why? Why? Naruto asked. Irohka sighed. At least now he had Naruto's attention. A small smile tugged at his lips as he answered. Konoha had lost my respect for a long time Naruto, even years before you were banished. Then why didn't you quit earlier? Naruto asked, ignoring the fact that he was supposed to act like he didn't care. Because I had someone to protect Irohka looked Naruto as he said this. And Naruto knew who that someone was. I could only help you if I had remained a ninja, so I did. I always believed that you didn't belong in Konoha. Naruto narrowed his eyes. You deserve better than Konoha. And seeing you now, I guess I was right I wanted to get you away from Konoha, wanted to give you a new chance at a happier life but even behind the mask you wore, I knew you loved Konoha. And the Sandame always managed to convince me saying that you belonged in Konoha. Irohka scowled. And as long as you loved Konoha I couldn't take you away from here. But I tried to help you as much as I could. And for a while you were happy and I was satisfied everything went to hell with the Sandame's death. I was afraid whoever the new Hokage was would treat you as a weapon, but then you came back with Tsunade. Seeing how close you were to Tsunade, I was relieved. But of course things couldn't stay good for very long, could they? Irohka chuckled ruefully. I knew that the council was planning to get rid of you even before Sasuke defected. And that little Uchiha bastard gave them the perfect reason. Naruto looked Irohka. His emotions a jumbled mess. When the council spread the news that you had gone Kyubi on Sasuke, I could guess what it would come to. Either they would execute you, banish you or turn you over to Danzo. Among the three, I thought banishment was the best. I trusted Tsunade to have some more power over the council, but I guess she was too weak-willed for that. Irohka sneered. Naruto was shell-shocked by this new side of Irohka. The day before your punishment was decided, I found out that most of the council members were planning to execute you or turn you over to Danzo. I couldn't allow that. It was quite easy to manipulate the council members. Some rumors about how your death would result in the Kyubi being released and a little lie about an organization after the Kyubi, which would attack Konoha to capture you I only found out too late that the last one wasn't a lie at all. They predictably took the easier way out. Banishment. You Naruto mumbled shocked. Irohka chuckled. Yeah, I am not the goody-two-shoes after all, huh? Naruto looked down. He had a lot to think about already. Irohka continued. I was worried about them sealing off your chakra, as the procedure for banishment, but your Jinchuriki seal helped out there. Of course, the only reason they didn't seal his chakra back then was because it would have messed up his Jinchuriki seal, Naruto remembered that well. I wanted you to leave Konoha without a conflict, and I wanted you to have no reason to ever come back to this accursed village if something went wrong. And after what had happened, I was the only thing binding you to this village. Irohka said. So you cut that relationship off, so that I would be free Naruto finished. Now he understood why Irohka treated him the way he did at that time. Naruto leaned back in his chair tired. This was all too much. But Irohka wasn't done. But it was only supposed to be temporary. I took on a long-term mission the day before your banishment took place. I needed a reason to be out of the village. And using my mission as a cover, I followed you. I couldn't tell you the truth just yet, so I followed in the shadows and made sure you made it out of the Fire Country unscathed. Naruto didn't even bother hiding his surprise any longer. He had always wondered what kind of luck he had back then. Irohka. Irohka smiled softly. Everything went fine for a while. You made it out of Fire Country safely and I had some friends outside Fire Country who made sure you were safe afterward. They were supposed to make sure you were fine without giving themselves away. And I came back to Konoha after the mission. I did some snooping around and made sure that neither Danzo nor any of the Konoha ninja had any information about you. I had a free rein because I had publicly belittled you. The civilians all believed that I was finally out of the demon's influence. Irohka scoffed. Then his eyes hardened. They were all so proud to tell me about how they had made your life worse than it already was. While they regretted it afterwards. Irohka's smirk had dark undercurrent. No one ever realized the reason for the sudden fires and tragedies that befell some of the esteemed council members and some merchant families. Naruto was chuckling now. Irohka you his eyes were sad. Why didn't you search for me afterwards, Irohka? Naruto asked sadly. Irohka lowered his head. Because I had believed that you died. Naruto looked confused. Irohka explained. For a month everything was alright. You were in Water Country and one of my friends was looking after you. Naruto frowned, then his eyes saddened. Mira? He asked softly. Irohka nodded. Mira was a woman that Naruto could never forget. He had just made it into Water Country, and he was depressed and didn't even want to live anymore. That's when Mira found him. She was beautiful, with sky-blue eyes and cherry-red hair. He didn't understand then, but Mira had been of Uzumaki ancestry. She took him to her inn and gave him a room and took care of him despite his protests. She was the one who had managed to bring him out of his depression. And he was truly happy then, but then the Akatsuki came. It was Kakuzu and Hayden who came for him that time. Mira had tried to protect him. She failed and the price was her life. Naruto believed that it was the sight of her lifeless body that finally broke him down and crumpled every bit of will he had to live. That time just before her death Mira was trying to tell him about someone who wanted to protect him. At that time he never understood what she was trying to say. Now he knew that she was talking about Irohka. I had quit being a Shinobi by the end of that month and was planning on going to Water Country to meet you and Mira there. Then I would have told you all the truth. I was worried when Mira didn't send me any letters that week. By the time I made it to Water Country I got news of her death and you being kidnapped. Irohka's eyes looked far off. She died trying to protect me Naruto mumbled. And she is happy that she did. Naruto looked at Irohka. Irohka was looking at him with conviction. The week before her death she wrote to me saying how precious you are and that if she had to, she would lay her life down for you. I was glad that you had one more person to protect you Irohka closed his eyes stifling his tears after I knew you were kidnapped. I used the help of every connection I had in the Elemental Nations. That's how I found out about the Akatsuki. I also found out about how they killed the Jinchuriki by extracting the demon. I had made my way to Aim, trying to find you even if I knew I was too weak and too late. I arrived there, only to witness the giant explosion of demonic chakra that took half of Aim with it. I had assumed the worst after that. Naruto nodded. He understood, and he was glad that he listened to Irohka. Silence extended for some time before Naruto stood up. Naruto walked over to Irohka and pulled him into a hug. Sorry, Irohka-nai-san, he whispered. Kaishiro stood at the door watching the scene. He knew it was the right decision to let Irohka speak with Naruto. He didn't know what happened, but was sure that his mate would let him know later. He turned away and left, giving then some privacy. Naruto entered his bedroom to see Kaishiro lying on the bed. The blankets had pulled around his waist exposing his naked chest. Kaishiro's head was tilted exposing his neck and the mating mark. His silky red hair spread out on the pillow. Naruto stood there and appreciated the view for some time. If you like the view, why don't you come and get a closer look? Kaishiro turned his head to face to look at his mate. Eyes glowing in the dimly lit bedroom. Naruto smirked and unbuttoned his shirt as he stepped forward. I'll take you up on that offer. Kaishiro watched intently watched as his mate discarded his clothes one by one, slowly and sensually. Once he was naked Kaishiro pulled him forward so that Naruto fell on top of him and then flipped their position. Mm-hmm, you're in a very good mood today. Kaishiro spoke before moving down to nibble on Naruto's neck. Naruto gasped and arched his back as Kaishiro bit on top of the mating mark. Aren't I always? Naruto asked gasping. Maybe to the others but I am your mate Naruto. You are different today. Kaishiro met Naruto's eyes as he said this. Naruto noticed that Kaishiro's pupil had turned fox-like. Naruto smirked. His mate was getting rather wild tonight. Naruto leaned forward and put a small kiss on Kaishiro's lips. Of course you would know. I feel better than I have felt in a long time today. Does this have something to do with Irohka's visit? Naruto scoffed. As if you don't know. I know you're the one who let Irohka in. Kaishiro smirked. Instead of answering he placed his lips on Naruto's chest and placed little kisses. So what exactly happened? Kaishiro asked. Naruto smiled sadly. We talked and Irohka even let me see his memories afterwards. What did you see? Ah, he always tried to help me Kyo, he never was disappointed in me when he heard about what I supposedly did to Sasuke. He didn't believe any of the things they said. Yet he belittled you for your actions that day? Why would he do that? Did you know, he was trying to get me out of the village? He believed that I deserved better than Konoha. He had fought with the Sandame so many times over that. But the Sandame always stopped him saying that Konoha wouldn't let go of their Jinchuriki just like that. He protected me from so many assassination attempts yet always stayed in the shadows. Kaishiro frowned. Wasn't he just a Chunin? Naruto laughed. Irohka-nai-san was a master of deception Kyu. He may be Chunin by rank, but when it comes to strength Naruto smirked. Kaishiro chuckled. But if he is that strong, how did Mizuki beat him so easily that night? Naruto frowned. He wanted Mizuki to tell me the truth about you being sealed inside me. He had fought with the Sandame so many times to let me know, but Gigi thought that it wouldn't be the best decision. Irohka believed that I had every right to know why I was hated, but he didn't want to go against the Sandame's orders either. So he let Mizuki do the dirty work and if I hadn't jumped in and disposed of Mizuki, I am sure that Irohka would have after that. Oh, and he's no longer a Konoha ninja. Naruto added as an afterthought. Kaishiro hummed. But that would mean that his chakra was sealed off. Isn't that what they do to active Shinobi who quit and want to leave the village? Yes, his chakra used to be sealed, until this morning. Naruto said. Kaishiro laughed. There's no seal and Uzumaki can't crack. I always wondered why no one attacked me while I was leaving the Fire Country. Not even the root ninja had come. Well, today I got my answer to that question. Kaishiro was surprised. You mean Irohka? Naruto nodded. That guy must be something then. Danzo would have sent at least one or two groups after you. Kaishiro mumbled. He made sure that I got out of Fire Country unscathed and covered up my trails. He wanted me to cut all my ties with Konoha, including him. He didn't want me having anything that could bring me back to this accursed village, that's why, he. I see Kaishiro mumbled. He did a lot for you. He did. He only remained a ninja because he wanted to make sure that Konoha never dragged me back. He did all this for me. He has a very good spy network, you know. A spy network too? Kaishiro deadpanned. Whoever made that guy a Chunin? Naruto chuckled. Well, he found out when I had been captured by Akatsuki he thought that I had died. Kaishiro shook his head. He must have been devastated. After that he just wandered around. Only came back to Konoha when the news about me being alive and coming back here, reached him. He was glad that I was alive but still only came here to not let me get tied down to Konoha again. Naruto said. Well, what did he say about what you were doing to Konoha now? Kaishiro asked. That he'd help me in every way he can. Good, now that's out of the way Kaishiro said and his hands moved down Naruto's body. Ah, Naruto whined. I lost my mood Kyo. Maybe some other time. With that Naruto turned over and closed his eyes. Kaishiro laid there confused for about five seconds before his libido caught up to the fact that his mate had just denied him. Kaishiro narrowed his eyes. Oh, no you don't. In a split second Naruto found himself flipped over a demonic Kaishiro hovering over him. Kaishiro's eyes were red and fox-like. Nine tails coiled around Naruto, restraining him. Some of Kaishiro's tails glided over some sensitive regions eliciting a groan from Naruto. I have many ways to bring back your mood. Kaishiro said as his lips moved towards his mate's manhood. Unseen by Kaishiro, Naruto smirked. It was so much fun riling up his mate, especially when it had such interesting benefits. Naruto purred as his own demon reacted to his mate. Well, it was a good thing that the silencing seals were already up. One week passed just like that, but so many things had already changed. The biggest one was how the Hyuga Clan had changed. True to his words the Daimyo did investigate the Hyuga Clan matter, and the results were greatly against the Hyuga. Almost half of the Huga Clan, mainly the main branch, had been imprisoned for use of an illegal seal. They also had to pay a huge penalty. So it was easy to say that the Huga Clan was effectively crippled. But the branch families rejoiced their freedom. The caged bird seal was permanent so removing it was impossible, but Naruto proposed that he could alter it. Everyone was surprised when the Uzumaki offered to help. Flashback. Naruto san the Daimyo who was present at the meeting greeted the blonde as he entered. Naruto bowed his head in respect. Hisaki sama, rise Naruto san. Your grandmother told me that you agreed to help with the Huga issue. Hisaki said. Naruto nodded his head. The representatives of the branch family, one of them being Niji, were surprised that the blonde decided to help them considering how the blonde had made clear of his hatred for the entire village. I have studied about the caged bird seal my lord. I have found that the seal is impossible to remove without harming the individual. Naruto informed and the branch family members gasped when they heard this. They had hoped the blonde had found some way to remove them. But I could alter it. Naruto said. All of them looked at the blonde confused. Alter it how Naruto san? Well it's fairly simple. I could remove the part of the seal that causes pain to the bearer of the seal. Instead the seal would act as a bloodline protection seal. The Huga all looked at the blonde surprised. What all will the altered seal do Naruto san? Niji stepped forward and asked hopefully. Naruto looked at Niji. No emotions crossed his face as he spoke. The altered seal will prevent the Byukugan from being transplanted and the Byukugan genes on the body of a member after they die will be sealed off. That is, the DNA from the dead body would be useless if anyone wished to use it. That's it, and you will be able to do it? Another Huga asked. Yes. Naruto said with conviction. I don't doubt your ability Naruto san, but why are you helping us? A female Huga asked. Does it matter what my reasons are? Naruto asked with a raised eyebrow. The Huga had no answer. For the record, let's just say that I helped you because I know how it feels to suffer because of a seal that you had no choice about being placed on you. The sentence struck their hearts, but Naruto had said it all with a stoic face. If you have no problem accepting my help, I will be ready to modify the seal tomorrow itself. Naruto informed them and left. Flashback ends. The very next day, the seal had been modified. The entire Huga Clan, or at least what was left of them, was indebted to Naruto. Naruto, did you have breakfast yet? Naruto looked up from the document he was reading over. Irika was standing at the door with a tray of food. Ah thanks Irika sensei. Naruto said with a small smile. Irika walked in and placed the tray on the table. The fight's today. Are you ready? Irika asked. Aren't I always? Naruto chuckled. The real question is whether they are ready for me. Irika smiled. He had complete trust in Naruto's abilities. Where is Kyo? Naruto asked as he finished breakfast. Oh, he said that he'll meet you at the stadium. He wanted to greet the other Kagas before the match started. Hibara sama went with him as well. Ah I kind of forgot about the other Kagas coming to watch the matches who all were coming Irika? Well, the Sandame and Yandame Satchikage, the Godame Mizukage, don't forget Garakuin and the Godame and Sandame Reikage as well. And don't forget that all the Daimyo would be present as well. All of them are here? Not surprising after all, this match will create a huge change in the balance of power. Naruto sighed. Naruto, it's time to go to the stadium. Irika said. Alright, let's go. The stadium was filled with people. People from outside and inside Fire Country were there to see the matches. Most of them just wanted a chance to meet the Naruto Uzumaki who was their mysterious and talented golden fox, as well as the head of the Black Rose Corporation. Those particular details had been made public after Naruto had informed the council of it. After all, no use keeping it a secret when they knew that the Konoha Council would make it public anyway. Naruto and Irika appeared inside the Kage box with a traceless shunsin. Ah Naruto kun you're here. It was Kuratsuichi, fourth Satchikage, who greeted him. Naruto bowed to the woman and the rest of the Kagas. No need to bow before us Naruto kun, after all we are friends. Dari, fifth Reikage said chuckling. The others agreed. My. You've gotten even more hot since the last time I saw you Naruto Kaishiro san is quite the lucky man may said giving Naruto a smirk. Then she glanced over at Kaishiro. But the same goes for Kaishiro I suppose. Two unearthly beauties for each other why are all the cute ones gay? All others chuckled. Well good to know that you haven't changed maesan. Kaishiro chuckled. Sunade could only watch dumbfounded as Naruto and the other Kagas engaged in a friendly banter, as if they had known each other for a long time. Jokes aside, are you ready for the match Naruto? Gaara asked. Naruto only replied with a smirk. Kaishiro stood near the glass viewing window. While the crowd's getting impatient it's time to start the matches. The other Kagas nodded in agreement. Naruto moved towards Kaishiro who pulled him into a passionate kiss. Wait till you get somewhere alone you too or you'll give the old guys a heart attack. Gaara said. Anoki and I protested to the comment. The others only chuckled. Naruto and Sunade vanished from the Kage box. They all watched as Naruto appear in the middle of the stadium in a swirl of black rose petals. Cries of Naruto sama, filled the stadium. Fan girls squealed and some even fainted at the sight of their idol. Kaishiro only chuckled. So how are the matches arranged? Anoki asked. Is it an all against one match, or one-on-one matches? Dari asked. One-on-one Kaishiro said Nera said and I quote. I want some personal time with all of them. The other Kagas chuckled. He's going to decimate them Gaara said. Kaishiro hummed. His eyes moved to the area where the nobles sat. There a beautiful raven-haired woman with violet eyes sat watching the match. She turned to look at him when she felt eyes on her. Her violet eyes met Kaishiro's. Kaishiro smirked, and her eyes widened. She quickly looked away. No one noticed this small exchange as everyone was listening to Sunade give an introduction speech. When she laid out the terms of the matches, there were a lot of protests. No one wanted their beloved Naruto sama becoming a part of a village like Konoha. After all Konoha had hit rock bottom over the last nine years and it was no secret. Ignoring the protests, Sunade list out the matches. The matches were as following. One, Naruto V slash S Ino. Two, Naruto V slash S Choji. Three, Naruto V slash S Tenten. Four, Naruto V slash S Shino. Five, Naruto V slash S Shakamaru. Six, Naruto V slash S Rockli. Seven, Naruto V slash S Kiba. Eight, Naruto V slash S Hanabi. Nine, Naruto V slash S Sai. Ten, Naruto V slash S Sakura. Eleven, Naruto V slash S Sasuke. Twelve, Naruto V slash S Karina. Thirteen, Naruto V slash S Guy. Fourteen, Naruto V slash S Asuma. Fifteen, Naruto V slash S Kakashi. Sixteen, Naruto V slash S Sunade. Sixteen, Naruto V slash S Jiraya. Begin. The audience watched with bated breath as a Jonin, just some random Jonin with no other importance than announcing the matches. Announced the match of the first match. Ino and Naruto stood looking at each other. Naruto looked bored while Ino had a look of concentration. I will defeat you Naruto. Ino said. Naruto raised an eyebrow, not really phased by her proclamation. Instead he stood a little straighter, and put his hands inside the pockets of his jeans, and tilted his head to the side so that his bangs fell over his left eye slightly. There was a chorus of squeals and flashes of camera, almost all of them focused on Naruto. Ino scowled. Was he doing that on purpose? Posing for pictures during the match, just to piss her off? But she had to admit, he looked rather hot, especially with that smoldering gaze focused on her, his v-neck tightly stretched over his lean muscles making him all the more delectable. Naruto smirked as if he heard her thoughts. Are you planning on fighting or just standing there and ogling me Ino? Ino blushed angry and embarrassed. Her hands flew into a sign and she yelled. Mind-body switch jutsu. Naruto jumped out of the way of the mind transfer. Did you really think that would warn Naruto stopped midway? His eyes going blank. From the balcony overlooking the matches the rookies were surprised that it ended so easily. The Kagas however were chuckling to themselves. Did she really just go into the mind of a former Ginchuriki who now possessed the power of the Jubi? Well bad luck for her. A moment later Naruto smirked again. Well that was easy Sakura scoffed. Hey Ino, just make the idiot forfeit already. She shouted down at who she thought was Ino. Naruto looked at her and raised an eyebrow. Then he chuckled and slowly moved towards Ino's down body. So Ino managed to master the mind-body switch? She was able to change the direction of the jutsu even when I moved, it was very much faster than expected as well. Any other opponent would have been easily defeated Naruto thought as he stood next to the body. What is she doing? Sakura asked confused. Shakamaru's eyes widened. It's not Ino. What that's impossible. Sakura said even Sasuke kun had trouble breaking out of her advanced mind-body switch. And he just broke out of it just like that. Impossible. Ino stood confused. This was Naruto's mind? It was plain, just an ending white space. Usually this is the place where she gets the motor control of her target's body, but why is she still here? Why hello there? Are you here to keep me company? A gleeful voice announced from her right. She turned to look at who had said that, it was a woman. Blood red eyes and hair, her skin a dark brown's color. She had the body that could make any straight man fall for her, and she was completely naked. Who are you? Ino asked cautiously. Oh I am sorry, where are my manners? The woman yelped a hand flying over her cherry red lips. My name is Time and I am the first defense. Ino was surprised. A mind defense? One so well crafted as well. Ino understood that it was not really a woman or an entity, but simply a mental representation of one of the many defenses inside Naruto's mind. First defense? How many defenses are there? Ino asked skeptically. This was troublesome. The woman. Time as it is called smiled brightly. Oh creator has nine defenses around his mind. I am the first and the weakest one. Time looked down, but no one has ever gotten past me. Really? Why is that? Ino needed to know as much as possible, every defense had a weakness. Creator is obviously Naruto. Because everyone would die before they find a way past me Time had a very pitying smile. What? Ino asked dubiously. That's my specialty you see. By coming into my domain, you actually granted me control over your body. Time was still smiling sadly. What? Ino yelled. Impossible. Ino's eyes opened, and her body stood up. Everyone watched surprised. Her eyes were red. Naruto smirked as she bowed before him. What shall I do creator? The usual, time. Naruto said. Everyone watched in muted horror as Ino's body began changing. What are you doing to my body now? Ino asked. I will start by aging your body, a year per second. In a minute you will be seventy-two years old. Isn't that sad? You purring Time spoke. Ino watched in horror as the woman stepped back and gave her a nasty smirk. Creator was kind on you usually I don't inform the intruders of what is happening to their body before it is too late. And I usually wait till their bodies start turning to dust before kicking them out. But creator wanted me to inform you now. Time pouted. So you still have a chance to live if you go back out now. Ino stepped back in shock. It has already been thirty-five seconds, you better get out now you pathetic girl or you'll have to live with your life as old as your father's grandmother. Time sneered. In a flash of panic, Ino cancelled the jutsu. Time vanished as the defense went back to dormancy. Red eyes turned back into pale blue. Everyone watched still shocked as Ino came back to her own body. She looked at least fifty years old now. The twenty-two-year-old girl who started the match was now in a body far older than her actual body. Ino fell down on her knees in horror. Impossible she whispered in shock and horror. For a woman like her, this may be the greatest punishment yet. Ino, Naruto began. Be thankful, I let you have easily. Compared to what I have planned for some others, this is nothing. So quit now and I might not cause you further damage. That was a warning, and Ino knew that. Everyone who heard it knew that. But she was angry. You monster she screamed and launched herself at Naruto. For a ninja, escaping a fight with her life and virtue should have been the most important thing, but she had let her anger take over just because her body aged a little? Didn't she understand that much worse could have happened if Naruto had wished for it? Naruto narrowed his eyes. Did she still think that she had a fucking chance against him? He felt insulted. His chakra roared outward like a tsunami wave. Everyone felt the power rolling off the man. Ino froze when she felt the pressure of the unleashed chakra. Then Naruto's hand was suddenly placed on her stomach, five fingers pressing into her skin and all she knew was pain. I really didn't intend to do this to you but you should know when to quit. He whispered in a calm voice as if he was talking about the weather. Ino fainted and the Jonin proctoring the match jumped down to check her. After a moment he confirmed that she was just unconscious and not dead. Winner, Uzumaki Naruto he announced. The crowd roared. What did he do to her? Sakura asked shaken. How did she age so fast? The dobe's strong Sasuke said smirking. The others were not surprised that he didn't care much about what happened to Ino. Next match, Uzumaki Naruto V slash S Akimichi Choji the proctor announced. Choji was down in the arena and he gulped as he looked at Naruto. The power he felt was still causing a shiver to run down his spine. Naruto watched impassively as Choji was on the verge of indecision. Begin. The proctor announced. Choji Naruto spoke and Choji looked at Naruto unsurely. I personally have no qualms against you unlike the others. You're a nice guy and if you want, I am giving you a chance to quit this now. You can go back out, with yourself and your wealth intact. Stunned silence followed that statement. Kaishiro shook his head, no matter how much Naruto tried to act heartless, he could never completely become one. He may become a cold-hearted jerk at times, but never heartless. I can't Choji said after a moment of silence. I am the heir to the Akimichi clan, so if I lose, everything owned by my clan will also be lost. I know and understand that but I cannot back down without a fight Naruto, it would be the greatest insult to my clan and comrades. But thank you for offering. Naruto nodded with a slight smile. Just then the earth beneath his feet crumpled and Naruto began sinking into the suddenly muddy earth. Behind him stood another Choji with his palms pressed to the ground. Naruto only smirked. A shadow clone huh? Smart. And then Naruto melted into mud. Choji wildly looked around for the enemy Akunai in his hand. His shadow clone dispelled suddenly. Before he knew what was happening a water dragon was racing at him from the cover of the shadow clone's smoke. Body expansion jutsu his fist enlarged to monstrous size and smashed through the incoming water dragon with ease. Impressive Naruto's voice sounded from behind him. Choji turned around to deliver a punch without wasting a moment. But as soon as he did, a kick to his back sent him sprawling towards the stadium walls. Sorry Choji but I have to cut this short Naruto said as he stood a few feet away from Choji. Blank faced. Choji tried to move but his body was already caught. Restrain Naruto murmured and that's when Choji noticed the tendrils of chakra engulfing each limp and restraining him to the ground. Sleep Choji Naruto said before Choji could come up with any other plan. And Choji felt his awareness slip away. The proctor checked the slumbering form of Choji and announced Naruto the winner. That's two matches in the span of five minutes the Water Country Daimyo said. Is it just me or is the Konoha ninjas getting weaker? He chuckled. It is not surprising after all, Naruto san is the grandson of Hibara Dano, and the child of the famed Red Death and Yellow Flash. The Grass Country Daimyo said. Naruto chan's strength is the result of years and years of hard work. Being the child of a Kage or grandchild of a Daimyo has nothing to do with it Hibara said. My apologies if I offended you, Hibara Dano the Grass Country Daimyo said. Hibara only nodded in reply. My daughter has been raving about Naruto kun from the moment she heard about him being the famed Golden Fox. It seems my precious Mayo chan has a crush on your grandchild the Lightning Country Daimyo said with a chuckle. His daughter Mayo, who was seated near her father, blushed heavily. Hibara had a very good idea where this conversation would lead to. Oh she's such a cute child. I would have definitely liked her as my granddaughter-in-law, had my Naruto chan not been married already. Most of the Daimyo present were surprised by the news. He's married! Dear sweet Mayo screeched none too gently. The Lightning Country Daimyo tried to calm down his raging daughter. While Hibara was sympathetic on the outside, she scowled on the inside, like I'd let a bitch like her ever marry my Naruto chan. Oh, the next match has begun. That had most of them turning their attention back to the arena. Tenten and Naruto face each other in the stadium ground. She tightened her grip on the Kanai. She was not a person for monologues and such but she was greatly disappointed in Naruto for abandoning his former home. She was determined to beat him, so that he could be useful to Konoha. Naruto could feel the emotions inside her and smirked. Her loyalty was impressive, but Konoha did not deserve it. And no matter what Konoha had done, she will remain loyal to it. Tenten disappeared from sight that moment. Naruto just stood there nonchalantly. He lifted his hand and caught the leg that would have crushed his skull. He tightened his grip, not letting her go. Tenten frowned. He looked at her, and then turned to look upward from where many weapons were going to rain down on the both of them. Tenten smirked at him and whispered. Twin rising dragons before she used a replacement to get out of his hold. Naruto raised an eyebrow. The weapons firing at him in high speeds suddenly changed course and began rushing at Tenten. Tenten's eyes widened as she was forced to dodge her own attack. As the weapons all hit the ground where she stood earlier creating a huge cloud of dust, she tried to sense Naruto. But imagine her surprise when she found the stadium entirely drenched in his chakra. It was spread out like tekani, making it difficult for her to pinpoint the source. For all she knew, he could be anywhere inside the stadium. Tenten growled in frustration, but she suddenly stiffened when an arm wrapped around her midsection from behind. Not having fun? His voice was husky as he whispered into her ear. Tenten tried to flip their position, but found that her body was immobilized. He chuckled at her attempt. It's no use you won't be able to move or talk. He said smirking. The cloud of dust now covered them both out of sight of the audience. She knew that the dust should have normally dissipated by now, but it still remained meaning that he was doing something to keep them out of sight. What was he planning? This might hurt a lot. And before she could even comprehend what he had said, pain assaulted her from all sides. Tenten's screams rang out on the arena and everyone watched with bated breath as the dust cloud cleared. Tenten lied unconscious on the floor and Naruto stood there calmly. Winner, Naruto Uzumaki the crowd cheered once again as the proctor announced the winner. Kaishiro suppressed a yawn as he watched the match. This is boring and he knew that Naruto wasn't even putting an effort in. This is boring Kaishiro projected his thoughts to his mate. You're right. I should speed this up. I am only really interested in putting down a few particular people Naruto's voice echoed in Kaishiro's mind. The next match is with the Aburem. Do you plan on playing with him? No I'll end it soon. Aburem Shino stood facing his opponent. Naruto sighed and in one flick of his wrist, blades of wind rushed at his opponent. Shino took a direct hit, and then scattered into a bug clone. Naruto could feel the swarm attacking him from behind. He closed his eyes and unleashed his chakra once more. The insects that ate his chakra all fell one by one. Another wave of chakra and the entire stadium ground exploded sending Shino flying from the underground. Shino couldn't even gather his balance before chakra chains pinned him to the stadium wall, and he was knocked out. Winner, Uzumaki Naruto. You really needed to do that much damage? Kaishiro thought exasperated. Not really Naruto snickered. He's here by the way. I would be surprised if he didn't come. Kaishiro thought exasperated. Not really naruto snickered. He's here by the way. I would be surprised if he didn't come. So should give him the offer or just set up a meeting? Set up a meeting. I wish to meet him in person. I have a feeling that he'd like that especially after he see all the matches. Naruto's chuckle reverberated in his mind as the proctor announced the next match. Uzumaki naruto v slash s nara shikamaru begin. Naruto looked down to see that he was already caught by the nara's shadow. Shikamaru had narrowed his eyes at naruto. He was aware that with the amount of skills naruto had shown there was a high chance that naruto might break out of his hold. Before naruto knew it a kanae was at his jugular. He didn't need to know that a shikamaru clone was behind him with a kanae. Shikamaru moved his hands to the pouch on his thigh and naruto mimicked him. Shikamaru took out a kanae but since naruto had no weapon pouch on him he was weaponless. Shikamaru placed his hand so that he could throw the kanae at naruto. Give up now naruto. It would be a lot less troublesome for both of us. Naruto chuckled and then he moved his hand. Shikamaru to his horror found himself mimicking naruto's actions. It was clear that naruto had overtaken the shadow possession. Shikamaru cursed and tried to cancel his shadow possession but again to his confusion the shadow possession remained. Shikamaru growled. The clone holding the kanae to naruto's jugular moved the kanae so that it nicked his throat. Don't move. But naruto only chuckled. Soon the naruto he was holding had vanished. Naruto now stood a few feet away from them near a tree and miraculously the shadow was still connected signaling that the jutsu had not yet ended. But instead of a single connection between naruto's shadows split into three. One connecting with the clone that had held a kanae to his neck. The other connecting with the shikamaru that had initially caught him in the jutsu and the third one extended into the tree's shadow. Naruto took three steps forward and the two shikamaru mimicked him helplessly and to everyone's surprise another shikamaru had also come out from hiding in the tree's shadow. All three shikamaru were caught in naruto's shadow. Naruto moved his hand like shikamaru had done earlier and acted like taking out a kanae. Naruto's hand was empty but the three shikamaru who actually had kanae pouches had to take out actual kanae from their pouches. Naruto moved his curled hand to his throat. Shikamaru mimicked him. All three had a kanae placed at their neck. Shikamaru knew he was caught. Naruto had been smarter than he gave him credit for. He was about to surrender but then a searing pain shot through his body. He fell down screaming. The shadow wavered and vanished as naruto canceled the jutsu. Shikamaru was on the ground unconscious. Winner uzumaki naruto. Another match in naruto's favor. Kaishiro said. Not really surprising gara said. The only reason I came here even when I knew the results of the match already was to get out of paperwork duty for some time. And it would be fun to see konoha get what it deserves. Yeah, that too. Gara agreed. Kaishiro only chuckled. His eyes again swept back to the figure of the woman he had noticed earlier. She seemed intrigued. Once again she took notice of him staring at her. This time she met his eyes steadily for some time. Who is that kaishiro kun? May asked. You're not planning on cheating on poor nerakuin are you? Kaishiro chuckled. She's just an acquaintance he murmured without taking his eyes off of the woman. Naruto uzumaki v slash s rock lee begin. I will defeat you today my youthful friend and then you shall be back in our home village once again. My flames of youth shall help me win. Hmm? You believe you can defeat me? Naruto scoffed. You will need more than just your youth for that. Do not underestimate me naruto san. Wrong. You are the one underestimating me lee. With that naruto vanished from sight. Lee who had already removed his weights also moved and vanished. The fighting figures were invisible for the crowd. They moved at such speeds that all they could get a glimpse of was streaks of colors. There was a crash and everyone saw lee in a hole in the wall. Naruto stood at the opposite end of the arena not a hair out of place. I see your flames of youth burns brightly my friend. Such a hypocrite you are lee. You call me your friend yet all you want from me is to submit my entire life to a village and people that despise me. Before lee could reply or even move naruto was there his fist buried in lee's abdomen knocking the breath out of him. Remember lee, I have no personal problems against you but anyone who fights for this wretched village are my enemies. Lee twisted out of naruto's hold and swiped his right leg at him. Naruto blocked and again punched lee hard. I will leave konoha crippled by the end of the day and by proxy. Anyone who fights for konoha too. Lee attempted a left hook but naruto was not there anymore. Instead he was behind lee with one hand on lee's spine. It's over for you now lee. Pain much like what the others who fought naruto felt slammed into lee. Lee was on the ground stunned not even capable of screaming and then he lost consciousness. Winner naruto uzumaki. The crowd roared. Though most were a little confused at what exactly naruto had done to lee since no external injuries were seen. Kaishiro stood up gracefully from his seat. Gara looked at him with an eyebrow raised. Where are you going? May asked. I have some business that needs attending. Kaishiro didn't explain further and the kages didn't push as they trusted him. Kaishiro once again looked at the violet-eyed raven-haired beauty among the nobles and slowly made his way over. Naruto uzumaki v slash s kiba inazuka begin. Get ready boy. We are winning this match no matter what. Akamaru acknowledged kiba's words with a bark. The canine knew that the chances of them winning the match was very low but he would stand by his master till the end. Even though said master was very good at digging his own grave with his attitude akamaru couldn't just let him die. As cocky as ever akiba? Naruto asked smirking. Kiba's answer was a yell of man beast mimicry and suddenly there was two feral looking kibis. Have you learned no new tricks yet? All of you just use same old techniques. Naruto answered bored. We'll show you what we can do. Kiba yelled getting ready for a jutsu. But naruto had other plans as he turned his eyes to the second kiba and spoke stay out of this one. Let the puppy fight this match on his own. As soon as he finished vines erupted from the ground and coiled around that kiba immobilizing him completely and right after that. That kiba turned into akamaru who was tangled in the vines with no escape. Akamaru. The original who was standing at the side yelled. Down puppy your master will be safe. What? Too afraid to do anything without your dear sweet akamaru? Naruto taunted kiba who growled. You bastard. Kiba performed a fong over fong much weaker than when with akamaru. As the spinning kiba approached naruto stood there not even trying to dodge. By now the rest of the ninjas knew not to underestimate the blonde so they simply watched carefully to see what he would do. And naruto didn't disappoint them. As soon as kiba was near he extended his hand and the tornado crashed into an invisible wall. As naruto flexed his hand kiba found himself thrown back. It's a barrier. Kakashi said. His sharingan analyzing the barrier naruto cast without any seals. So he knows sealing arts or is it some type of jutsu? Asuma asked. Not sure but he has no seals on him as far as I can see. How strong is it? Can you tell? Karina asked. Didn't get enough time to check. It vanished. Kakashi mumbled lowering his headband over his sharingan I don't think kiba would win this one karina. Have some faith kakashi. She said grimly although she knew it was the truth. Where did he get the time to build an entire business empire in his name and learn to become so strong? Asuma asked taking a puff of his cigarette. We're talking about the boy who can multiply himself into thousands of copies asuma. If he figured out the secret behind shadow clones which I'm pretty sure he did then there is no telling how much he accomplished in ten years. Kakashi said. They all watched as naruto utterly trashed the inazuka who had once again charged blindly at the blonde. They all shook their head at his brashness. How he became a jonin they would never understand and we still don't know the limits of his strength. It is quite obvious that none of the rookie nine who are well on their way to jonin could stand five minutes against him. For all we know he might have already surpassed all of us. Sunade spoke sadly staring at her once precious boy who now promised to crush her home. In the background Sasuke scoffed. Standing beside him sakura looked offended in her master's lack of faith. Shusho you forget that he no longer has the QB. Even if he is as strong as you say there is no way he could win not after fighting all of us back to back. That was the plan was it not? Even if he wins now and gets everything from the losers by the end he would be tired. And it would be an easy win for us and by defeating him everything that he won till then would ultimately be returned to us. Unlike the rest of those fools we all are ranked and S-ranked shinobi in umbu. With two of them being the sanine and one ex-umbu commander hanabi finished looking at the rest of them. She was very confident in her ability to win. After all she was an A-ranked shinobi in the bingo books whereas all those who fought naruto till now would barely be ranked. Our victory is sure sunade sama. Like karina said have some faith. Sunade looked down at the arena where naruto stood over the now defeated kiba. His appearance as immaculate and relaxed as he had been when it started and sunade found it hard to find that faith she needed. Winner naruto uzumaki. What is he doing to all of them? Karina asked. Is it a genjutsu? She like everyone had seen her student scream in pain after naruto just touched him and just like the others kiba passed out without any physical wounds. Eh, I'm not sure. Whatever he is doing to them all I can see is bright flash of chakra that is actually quite painful to look at with the sharingan and probably the bukugan too. They all looked at hanabi who had long since deactivated her bukugan after the first time naruto used the technique on ino. And like kakashi had said it was very painful and she had found herself gritting her teeth in pain and eyes watering profusely as her vision blurred. She hadn't bothered to activate the bukugan to watch the fights that followed. It leaves them all perfectly healthy at least physically except ino that is. Poor girl. Karina said. There must be a way to reverse it right shusho? Sakura asked worry for her friend who had become older than her mother just like that. Sadly sunade shook her head. Other than wearing a genjutsu like sunade's there was no way for ino to look young again. Naruto uzumaki v slash s hanabi hyuga. Hanabi disappeared from there and appeared on the stadium with a silent promise that this will be the last match of the day. Ah, the ex-huga princess. Heard that you wanted to fight me so badly. Naruto smiled at the girl who looked at him with narrowed eyes. You will pay for dragging the hyuga main branch down. After this fight is over you will be nothing more than a guard dog for konoha once again. Naruto chuckled. Went first princess. Then I'll believe you. Begin. You are in my range of divination. Hanabi declared smirking as she entered her stance. She had intentionally shunshin at that close to naruto. So? It's not like it will do you any good. Naruto smirked. Hanabi glared and moved forward. Eight trigrams sixty-four palms devastation. Her hands moved as she aimed each strike at naruto's chakra points and to her utter surprise he blocked. Every single one of them. She moved faster in a frenzy to confuse him but he simp why kept up with her? Her personally modified gentle fist style was picked apart before her very own eyes. It was impossible. Once caught in the technique the victim's speed and reaction should have reduced drastically. But if he was able to keep up with her at her maximum speed and with his own speed reduced to about only a one hundredth of the original she feared how fast he truly is. Truly the son of the fastest man in history. But unlike his father naruto's speed was just that pure speed with no technique to assist. As her technique neared the end of the final one hundred and twenty-eight strikes she changed her tactic. Bend her legs to change her footing and twisted her just seconds before the final strike and called out heavenly rotation. Naruto had no time to react before the full brunt of the spinning chakra dome crashed into him at a close range. Hanabi canceled her technique just as quickly as she activated and sped through hand signs not wanting to give naruto any reprieve that might cost her the victory. Earth style dragon dance. Multiple dragons made of stone and dirt rushed at naruto. The impact made a huge cloud of dust. But hanabi kept vigilant with her bukugan in full focus. She sensed the presence behind her far too late and for all her efforts she got a kick to the back that sent her crashing forward before she regained her balance. And swiftly attacked him with a gentle fist to the heart. Her hand was caught way before she could make contact and with a sickening crunch she found herself cradling a broken wrist and biting back the pain it bought. Her left hand made another attempt at a gentle fist strike but that hand was caught at the elbow by a quick jab. And to her horror she felt the chakra flow to her left hand shut down completely in a way that even the gentle fists couldn't accomplish. She was forced out of her shock by a knee to her stomach followed by an uppercut that she was sure cracked her jaw. The backhand that sends her crashing to the ground was no better. And that's how hanabi hyuga found herself crumpled at the feet of the man she swore to defeat. Naruto looked down at the woman at his feet. Naruto frowned when the proctor began announcing the victor. He didn't mean to end it just like that. Winner. No. Everyone looked at hanabi who got back to her feet I can still fight. As the girl glared at him with contempt naruto found himself chuckling. You hyugas and your pride. So foolish. But I'm glad you got back up. The hyuga narrowed her eyes at the blonde. She gingerly moved into her gentle fist stance once again. Managing as much as she could with a broken wrist and a chakra blocked arm. Defense was her only bet at the moment until she could find a weakness that is. Naruto tilted his head and observed her for a moment before suddenly he was in front of her a hand at her throat and then pain. Hanabi screamed as she crumbled to the floor. She felt like she had swallowed fire and now it was burning her insides especially her eyes. Naruto had done the same mysterious technique and the flash of chakra at such a close range was more than her poor eyes could handle not to mention the pain her body was in. Winner naruto uzumaki. The unconscious hyuga was moved out of the stadium by medic nin. Naruto saw hinata among the medic nin dot he locked eyes with her. She'll survive. He said quietly but hinata understood him anyway. Hanabi might have been a spoiled brat but she was still her sister. Hinata mumbled a tearful thank you as she walked away with the other medic nin carrying hanabi. Earlier the nobles greeted the onikich that entered the area reserved for nobles. Onikich sama what brings you to the nobles? One old man who was a noble from san greeted kaishiro respectfully. If you don't mind I would like to have a word with one of you. Oh? And who would that be? The man questioned. Many of the unmarried noblewoman and even some married ones hoped that it was them that the handsome and seemingly young kage wanted to talk with with lady yamini. Hmm? Lady yamini you say? I was not aware of a lady yamini among us the old man trailed of confused. Just then a raven-haired beauty with sparkling violet orbs stood up in her regal silk kimono. What business do you have with me onikich sama? The woman's tone was sultry and many of the women looked at her in jealousy when kaishiro offered her a charming smile. Milady I would like to invite you to dinner with me and my husband this evening to discuss some political matters regarding a potential alliance between us. Husband? Almost all nobles screeched internally. Dinner with you and your husband you say such confidence that your husband will still be with you come evening. Yamini said gazing at naruto fighting hanabi down below. The nobles who figured out who the husband was were even more disappointed at having lost the chance at both naruto and kaishiro. My confidence is not unfounded. Shall I be expecting you milady? Yamini narrowed her eyes and thought. Then nodded stiffly and placed another sultry smile on her lips. Would that be all? Kaishiro nodded with a polite smile and left. As he left yamini's eyes narrowed at his back. Potential alliance you say I hope you know who you are dealing with. Kaishiro kozama and naruto uzumaki namikes. Naruto uzumaki v slash s sai begin. There was no conversation between them as they didn't know each other and the fight started immediately. Naruto dodged the ink lions as sai had taken to the sky on his inked bird. He slammed his palm onto one of them and the lions exploded into a shower of ink. Surprisingly not one drop fell on naruto. Naruto narrowed his eyes as he saw the ink seeping into the ground but had no time to ponder on it before another lion attacked him. Sai made more ink lions from on top of his bird and they jumped down to the arena. Naruto narrowed his eyes and made ten clones. All of them began tearing apart ink animals. That boy is planning something. Anoki said looking at sai who was hovering above the arena. Indeed but what? I asked. That ink it is seeping into the ground and just disappearing. It's some kind of trap. Kuratsuki said. I have a bad feeling about this gara said looking down at the arena. Well, you are not the only one. Kaishiro who had appeared back inside the kage box said. It's over for you now boy. Danzo thought smirking down at the arena. Naruto narrowed his eyes at the ink animals that began melting into ink on their own. He stepped back suspiciously as the creature he was fighting two melted down. What are you planning? He thought looking at sai who was now at a visible height. The ink had all vanished into the ground. Something about the whole scenario unsettled him. Suddenly there were seals all around him. They appeared quickly as the ink suddenly began streaming out of the ground forming strokes of kanji. Naruto couldn't get a good look at the seals since it was massive and he was trapped in the center. But he did recognize the kanji he did get a look at and had a good guess what the seal was for. The seal array began to glow and soon it was glowing a bright red color. Naruto felt the seal immobilizing him and draining his chakra at a steady rate. He wasn't worried about chakra depletion simply because he had so much chakra that he knew the seal would get overpowered and blow up. But that didn't mean he would be careless nor would he let the people find out that particular detail about his chakra capacity. He would need less than a quarter of his chakra to overpower the seal but overpowering the seal meant people getting an idea of how much chakra he had. Because the chakra needed to overpower the seal is well past any human's limit. The clones all began popping one by one. The entire arena was now one gigantic seal array with the original naruto trapped inside. Naruto struggled for a minute then calmed down and observed the seal more. A suppression seal capable subduing even a bijuu if only for a brief period of time and the chakra draining seal containment seal the list goes on. At best the seal could take out a five-tailed bijuu. Impressive but not good enough. Naruto began looking for that one particular seal that would be sai's downfall. Everyone was looking at the arena in awe. Sai knew sealing. Sakura exclaimed looking at kakashi and Sasuke. Both of them didn't answer her and kakashi discreetly eyed jeraya. Jeraya looked pensive knowing what was coming next. It was his seal that was going to be naruto's downfall. He was both relieved and guilty at the same time. He looked over at sunade who refused to meet his eyes but he knew that it was guilt that was consuming her. The way she grits her teeth to stop herself from shouting out at the unfairness of it all. He closed his eyes. It was unfair and he knew that. He knew that better than anyone. After all he was the one who gave minato the fucking idea to use his kid as a gingeriki. He was the one who convinced his student that his son would be the child of prophecy. He was the worthless godfather that abandoned his godson for twelve fucking years and after all that he was the first one to give up on naruto when Sasuke accused him. And he knew he didn't even give the kid a chance to explain just because the prophecy had changed. The toads told him that the prophecy the fucking prophecy that he sacrificed everything for had changed. Naruto was no longer the child of prophecy that would save the world because there might not be a child of prophecy to begin with. Wasn't that just great and who paid the price for the change in the prophecy? Naruto did. Jeraya took his anger out on the kid that didn't even have an idea about the prophecy. Wasn't that the noblest thing to do? Now after all the crap they had put the kid through his village wanted him back and jeraya was helping his village. Maybe it wouldn't hurt so much if he didn't know that they were cheating. No matter how many times he told himself that cheating was part of being a ninja he couldn't help but feel guilty. Naruto was set up for a failure from the beginning. Jeraya. He turned to look at sunade who called out his name. I am forfeiting. Everyone present looked at their kage with wide eyes sensei. What the hell are you talking about now? Sakura shouted. I can't sunade looked down and all of them saw the tears brimming in her eyes. Jeraya felt like he couldn't even face her anymore. I can't do this he is my I just can't. Sunade jeraya spoke sternly his face set in a grim expression. I believe that forfeit is not an option for you and why the hell is that? She turned enraged eyes to him and jeraya ruthlessly squashed the urge to shrink away from her fury and most of all her pain. You're the Hokage of konoha. Your defeat means a lot more than just the loss of your inheritance and money. It means the loss of konoha. And you can't do that to your village. Sunade laughed and it was a bitter broken sound that all of them cringed. My village. My village. She laughed again and some of them were worried that their Hokage was losing it. The person who made this my village is fighting against me and my village right now jeraya. She might as well have roared it out for all the impact those silent words had. If naruto could convince me once to join the village I swore away from and to take up a position I despise then he doesn't need words to convince me to give it all away. Everyone looked at her outraged. There were protests all around but jeraya remained silent. Finally he spoke. What if he loses? What if he loses and you aren't here to be his Hokage? He'll win. Sunade said with conviction. Why was she defending him now? She thought. She had chances to defend him earlier so why was she doing it now? Because earlier she believed that if naruto would just come back to the village they could fix everything. Fix their broken relationship into something similar to what it was before all this. But then everything went out of hand and she forced herself to believe that this was the right path. But every interaction between naruto and his past friends during the matches proved her wrong. Whatever they had before was ruined dead and this course of action was only mangling the corpse further. In the end their words hit home and her lies that kept her from seeing things clearly were ripped away. Hanabi was right. If naruto ever comes back to konoha a guard dog is all he'll ever be. He had a life out there a family and that thought hit her heart because once upon a time she was a part of that family. With all these realizations came a kind of numbness that she couldn't push away. She wished that she had a bottle of sake with her. That's the only way she knew how to deal with all this. Jeraya's words brought her out of her depressing thoughts and his tone and the look on his face set off warning bells in her head. He won't. Jeraya said with enough conviction to match his blooming guilt. He has done something. Her mind warned. She gave jeraya a suspicious look. What did you do? Jeraya was silent. Impossible. Naruto thought. Sai shouldn't have enough chakra to maintain the seal. His eyes narrowed. Already the seal had drained about half a tail worth of chakra. It was no big deal to him but he wasn't going to show it. Half a tail worth of chakra was a big deal for all normal ninja and people shouldn't be finding out just how normal naruto is. And the seal unless konoha had a new seal master all along there is no way that sai could manage this seal without help. Of course sai had help. Naruto was no fool and he could recognize the work he was seeing for who made it. Naruto leaned down on one knee just for show and grunted like he was in pain. Maybe he should try acting as well since he is so good at it. There were gasps from his fans when he went down and applause from the kana hands. Naruto suppressed a smirk as he spotted the seal he was looking for. Time's up sai. Biting down on his thumb he broke the skin and stopped his healing from interfering with the flow of blood. He brought the bloody finger to the ground. One stroke, two strokes, three and four. Sealing was such a delicate art. A single stroke can mean a lot of difference. The restriction seal that had kept naruto trapped in the seal had been disabled. Not wasting any time naruto started running towards the seal he spotted. In a moment he was crouched down next to the master seal which was basically what kept the entire seal array together. What's he doing now? Jeraya's eyes narrowed while everyone else looked at the display with curiosity. Sunade was giving him an accusing look and he knew that she had figured it out. The entire stadium was rigged from the beginning. And jeraya was the one who did it. Sai looked down at what naruto was doing. He had managed to get freedom of movement within the seal and that was not good. But it wouldn't be long before that naruto was entirely drained and it wasn't like sai could do anything. He cannot attack naruto without risking the seal array absorbing the chakra he used to create the attack. And jeraya sama and danzo sama had warned him not go anywhere near the seal array once it was activated so he had nothing that he could do but watch. As he watched naruto finished whatever he was doing and stood up. Unease made itself known when he noticed that naruto looked entirely too smug. Naruto made some changes in the master seal and stood up more relaxed. He looked up at the hovering sai and gave a smirk. Everyone was watching with bated breath to see what would happen. Jeraya cursed when the seal's glow died down. He felt a tug at his chakra and his eyes widened when the array began glowing again but this time it was brilliant white in color. So white that it was almost blinding. Jeraya panicked when the tug on his chakra became more forceful. Naruto reversed it. He reversed the fucking seal. Without giving it a second thought he tugged back his sleeves and pulled out a kanae. In his inner wrist there was a seal the seal that connected him to the seal on the arena. He quickly slashed the kanae through the middle of the seal then used his blood to draw a counter seal. He sighed when the tug vanished but looking down at the arena he could see naruto shaking his head. Jeraya knew that disappointment was meant for him. He had failed once again. All around him the ninjas present gave him varying looks. He pretended not to see the understanding that dawned on their faces and the contempt on sunade's. But ignoring it didn't make it disappear. Naruto smiled ruefully. He knew there was something strange about the stadium from the beginning but he couldn't figure out what. The base for the seal had already been set up before the matches. Sai only initiated it. It was controlled by jeraya and powered by the chakra storage tanks beneath the arena floor. He hadn't paid much attention to the chakra storage tanks because they had been always there. They would absorb any residual chakra present after each fight and the collected power would be stored away for later. This had been how it was since arena was built. I guess defeating me was an emergency. It wasn't fair he knew that. Ninjas never played fair and that was just one of the things he hated about his once profession. He was planning on being nice but if this is how they want to play he don't mind. He crouched down and put one more stroke on the master seal. The white glow turned blue. Jeraya had cut himself off from the seal to save himself but the fool either forgot or thought that it would be fine to leave the connection with the storage tanks intact. Now there was nothing between naruto and four tails worth of chakra stored beneath his feet. Hokage sama. Tsunade turned her glower onto the poor fool who had come with some urgent message. What? She snapped. Hokage-sama, our chakra storage tanks are being drained. We have already half of the stored chakra and is steadily losing more as we speak. The chunin messenger was shaking from the wrath of the kage. But then Tsunade laughed. She laughed so hard that tears sprung from her eyes. It was all so funny to her. They were going to fail and it made her happy to know that. She turned to look at Jiraiya who had paled like he had seen a ghost. Didn't think that this could happen, did you? He's absorbing the chakra from the storage tanks, he whispered horrified. The original seal was supposed to absorb Naruto's chakra and add it to the storage tanks but now that Naruto had reversed it, the seal was taking chakra from the tanks and giving it to Naruto. The seal was only a backup plan. When Jiraiya had planted the seal with Danzo and the council's knowledge and help, he really didn't believe that Naruto would be strong enough that they would need to use the seal. But Danzo had pushed it, saying they needed a backup plan and Jiraiya had agreed. Now their backup just backfired on them. Jiraiya turned to gasps and looked down at the stadium. How much chakra was in the tanks? Sakura asked worriedly. Almost four tails worth of chakra. Tsunade said smirking amusedly. Had it been anyone else than Naruto their body would have given out at the stress from that much chakra but not for him. He is an Uzumaki and was a fucking gingeriki to boot. His body is adept at handling more potent chakra at a larger level. Four tails worth of normal chakra like this isn't anything compared to an equal amount of biju chakra. So the worst that could happen to him for taking on this much chakra would be a slight falter in his control. Naruto was glowing with the power he was absorbing. Jiraiya cursed, this couldn't be happening. The seal was supposed to drain and defeat Naruto, now it had made him more powerful than what he had begun with. Another messenger came a second later to inform them that their storage tanks were completely empty, and in the background Jiraiya could hear Tsunade's chuckles. But his eyes were fixed on Naruto who was smirking at him with a vicious twinkle in his eyes and even from this distance Jiraiya was sure of what he saw. Naruto took his eyes off of Jiraiya and turned to look at Sai who was hovering unsurely. He had no idea whether it was safe to be within the range of the seal or not. Soon once the storage tanks were empty, the seal gave one final glow and it died down. Naruto chuckled since he absorbed some extra power showing off didn't seem like a bad idea. Sai had no idea what hit him before he was wrapped up completely in golden chains and was pulled down to the ground. There was a crater where he fell. Naruto moved closer to the struggling man. Of course, there was no way of getting out of the chains even Horation wouldn't work once you're trapped in them. That's what made the Uzumaki chakra chains so infamous. Once you're caught, it means you're trapped with no way out unless you can break the chains with a physical force which was also very hard to do. He didn't waste any time. Moved one hand to the struggling man's forehead, and Sai passed out screaming like all others. Winner, Naruto Uzumaki. The medics were quick to remove Sai from the arena. Everyone was waiting with bated breath for the next match. Sakura stood with the other shinobi waiting for her match to be announced. Sakura Kakashi called and she turned to look at him. You won't be able to win this one like this. Sensei you, her protests died down when Tsunade scoffed at her. He is right, girl. Maybe you should just forfeit. Sakura turned her glare onto the woman who had taught her and shrunk back when the woman glared back. That was not what I was trying to say, Kakashi said and Tsunade turned to him with a raised eyebrow. He continued and this time looking at his kage and Jiraiya. We need to regroup and come up with something new. We have no idea what he had done to the others and so far from what we have seen all he needs is a single touch to cause damage. We need more time. Kakashi said. From the side, Sasuke scoffed and the others frowned thoughtfully. Tsunade looked irritated by the whole thing. We don't have any breaks planned between the matches. You all should know that, since it was your fucking idea that the continuous matches would tire him out. And now you want a break? Well you can go suck a dick asshole. Some of the shinobi looked scandalized at the Hokage, but Tsunade only smirked. Jiraiya frowned but he knew that Kakashi was right. Naruto reversing the seal, not just any seal, it was Jiraiya's masterpiece, means that he is at least at seal master level in sealing. But the ease with which Naruto had reversed the seal meant more than a seal master level. Kakashi scowled under his mask. The matches had started at ten AM and now it was close to eleven AM. Naruto took barely one hour for defeating nine opponents in one-on-one matches. Surely the rest of them were stronger than the first nine jonin, but it didn't mean much if they went in blind. Not to mention that the amount of chakra that Naruto absorbed meant more trouble. The chakra had formed a translucent blue layer around him and it was cackling like lightning and churning like violent waves. This was not good for them at all. They needed time and their kage was not listening. Tsunade-sama, you need to. I am not announcing for a break Kakashi, you can forget about it. Kakashi turned grim and looked down to the stadium just as the match was announced. Sakura went down to the arena without another word. Having fun? Of course Naruto raised his head to look at Kaishiro. He heard a chuckle resounding through their link, and he smiles back. He agreed to the meeting. Naruto hummed thoughtfully. We should be prepared. You sure this is what you want to do? What I want to do, Kyo? What I want to do is rip his head right off his shoulders but this is what I need to do for Gigi at least. Else that poor soul might never find rest. Naruto felt Kaishiro trying to calm him down through the bond and smiled softly. There is also something else. Naruto became curious. What? A child you might want to take a look at. Naruto frowned thoughtfully. A child. Just then the next match was announced. Naruto Uzumaki V slash S Sakura Haruno begin. Sakura-chan Naruto greeted in a mockingly cheerful tone. Sakura scowled, you have no right to address me like that, like we are friends. Naruto raised his eyebrow and then nodded with a smirk. Alright then Haruno-san, shall we begin? Sakura answered with a resounding strike to the ground and earth crumbled beneath her fist. Naruto jumped up gracefully and retreated to the other edge of the stadium. Sakura was with him in a matter of moments but Naruto dodged all of her attacks easily. She wasn't surprised as she saw how Naruto dodged Hanabi's attacks earlier. His speed was beyond her, and she had no hope for matching him in speed. Yet she kept on trying to land a punch on him and distract him. Naruto was amused. Sakura thought that he was distracted enough to not notice how she had slipped down those explosive tags. Moments before the first explosion, Naruto had vanished. Explosions rocked the arena and Naruto watched from another safer part of it. Sakura appeared behind him ready to punch his brains out. He turned around at the last minute and all the shinobi who knew the strength of the frontline medic froze. Naruto caught her fist in the palm of his hand nonchalantly. He wasn't even straining, just stood there with that nonchalant pose and Sakura's fist firmly caught in his palm. Sakura's eyes widened. Naruto. How? That's Uzumaki-san to you, Haruno-san or you can call me Namake-san. After all, we're not friends. Sakura almost didn't notice his other hand until it was too late, but she dodged at the nick of the time. This time, Naruto went on the offensive. But Sakura knew without a doubt that he was holding back and even then she'd barely escaped with her neck intact. Naruto was playing with her that much was sure. Her mind raced to find a plan but Naruto was slipping out of all her traps very easily. He countered her strength and taijutsu like she was just an academy student. Sakura aimed another punch and all it did was destroying more of the stadium. Naruto was nowhere to be seen. Where did he dash? Her line of thought was cut off by a sharp punch to her spine from behind. Sakura choked out a cry and she could feel her vertebrae breaking like twigs under the force of the punch. Another kick was placed at the back of her head and pain radiated through her entire body as her skull cracked under the impact. Sakura was too stunned to stop another punch to her chest that took out at least four of her ribs. She crumbled to the floor as her body could no longer support itself. Come on Haruno-san, we both know that this means nothing to you. Naruto was standing in front of her, and he was right. With a glare and a pained grimace, Sakura focused on her seal. In seal, release. The injuries vanished within the second. Sakura grimaced this time in irritation. It didn't take even few minutes of the match before she was forced to use her seal. She looked up and saw that Naruto was smiling at her. She growled and moved forward. Punch. Dodge. Kick. Dodge. This continued on for some time with Naruto landing too many punches too often. Sakura staggered back when Naruto managed to land a blow once more. It didn't take her long to figure out that if it hadn't been for the instant regeneration she would have been nothing but a bloody piece of meat by now. Then all of a sudden Naruto stopped, he had indulged her long enough. Sakura too stopped warily gazing at Naruto who was smiling at her patiently. So Haruno-san, I believe it's time to end this. Sakura's eyes narrowed. What's he planning? She cursed herself for not getting some more ninjutsu in her arsenal. She had concentrated on her physical strength and medical jutsu, both of which were not really useful in this situation. The coat of chakra that was swirling around him began concentrating around his palms and something similar to the chakra scalpel and covered up to his forearms. Sakura concentrated and activated her own chakra scalpel. And their match resumed. What happened next was brutal. This time, Naruto was even faster, his movements more precise and aiming for maximum damage. Sakura soon found out that unlike her chakra scalpels, whatever Naruto was using was shredding her muscles and nerves like wet noodles. They were aimed especially on her nerves. It was so much damage that she knew the instant regeneration technique was only barely managing to repair the damages. Panting and at a loss of what to do, Sakura stood to stare at Naruto in utter disbelief. She thought that she had a good guess on his abilities, then he goes and proves her wrong by going even beyond what she already knew. She resumed her fighting stance and got ready to take off, but then something went very, very wrong. All of them were silent as they watched the scene. Tsunade was the one who broke the silence with a chuckle. One of my greatest techniques, Tsunade laughed wholeheartedly, and he managed to surpass it. Tsunade was smiling unlike everyone else with her. Guess he surpassed the both of us already, huh Jiraiya? She didn't bother looking at Jiraiya, her eyes stayed fixed on the arena. Jiraiya stood behind her scowling. Her words weren't meant to be comforting and Jiraiya was none too happy to hear them. Her whole body shook and she stared in wonder at her arms. She couldn't muster up the horror she needed to feel and only stared surprised at the stream of blood still leaking from the multiple cuts on both her arms. She was bleeding. She was bleeding and she knew that her instant regeneration was still in effect. She stared at it for some more moment, willing the cuts to stitch back together. But no, her chakra was directed for the more extensive internal damage she noted duly. Her chakra was still trying to fix the mangled nerves that were a result of Naruto's strikes and if the worsening shaking and the loss of feeling in her legs were any indications, her chakra wasn't doing a very good job. Sakura numbly turned to look at Naruto as her body shook harder and she crashed onto her knee. He was now standing right in front of her. Would he leave her alive like he had done for the rest of the opponents, or would she be an exception? Her career was lost, she knew that at a base level. Extensive nerve damage meant that she would never have a steady hand or the immaculate chakra control she priced even if managed to heal and live. There would be no unscathed escape. Naruto raised his right hand the chakra still covering unto his forearms, and her eyes took in the sight of minute blades of chakra that moved like raging waves over his arms. She closed her eyes and waited for the finishing blow, and hoped that he made an exception and was about to end her. Without her career, her purpose, it wasn't worth living. But the blows she expected didn't come and instead two fingers grazed her forehead. Startled, she opened her eyes. There was no pain like she had expected, not that she thought she could be in any more pain than what she was already suffering through and she fell down to the ground completely, eyes falling shut. Winner, Naruto Uzumaki. Due to extensive damage to the arena ground the matches will be postponed to tomorrow. The announcement was met with many protests and disappointment from the audience but even they could see the damage done to the arena ground. Sakura and Naruto's match had resulted in deep fissures and cracks across the entire stadium. Naruto stood at a corner of the stadium with a frown. After some contemplating on whether or not to fix the ground this instant and let the matches continue, he decides not to do it. After all he would need to keep up some illusion that he was still human enough and defeating all of them in one go would not aid that. So with a sigh he vanished silently from the arena and appeared beside his friends and mate. So did you all enjoy the show? Naruto asked the various kage, and there are chuckles and various forms of agreement from them all. Kaishiro is silently smirking by his side and Naruto thinks about their earlier conversation. After a friendly conversation and a lunch together with all the kage, they go their separate ways. Once Naruto and Kaishiro were alone in their room Naruto sat down on the table. So this kid, he prompts. Kaishiro frowns thoughtfully. Don't know much about him, but I saw him in passing after the talk with Lady Yamini. Naruto gives him a serious look at the mention of her name. Kaishiro shakes his head as if to clear his thoughts and Naruto decides to concentrate on the subject at hand. So why is this kid so special? You'll know it when you meet him, Kaishiro said and Naruto knew that meant Kaishiro already had their people following the kid. How old is the kid? Three maybe four. Naruto nods slowly, assuming that this kid has a guardian. Single mother. Maybe we can meet her over dinner? Kaishiro shakes his head, no. Dinner is with Lady Yamini to discuss a possible alliance. Naruto chuckles, and he agreed? Of course he did. It's not surprising at all, Naruto says when Kaishiro nods. Naruto can see the way Kaishiro grits his teeth while talking about Yamini. And I think you have a meeting with Subasa? This time Kaishiro is the one who diverts the conversation. Naruto's eyes widened. Oh crap, I totally forgot about that guy. I was so caught up with all of this that I you know what, I'll meet with Subasa right now if he's free. Kaishiro nods and with a puff of smoke a small fox appears on his lap. With sunset orange fur and hazel eyes it is an adorable little thing. Kaishiro gently pets it for a moment, and the fox yips in a content greeting. Then its eyes flicker over to Naruto and Naruto chuckles when the fox yips excitedly at him. Nice to see you again, little one, Naruto said softly. Kaishiro chuckles, Kit, I need you to bring Subasa here. The fox bobs its little head and vanishes in another puff of smoke after some more yips at Naruto. I am starting to think that my kids like you more than me, Kaishiro mutters with a fake pout. Ah, don't be sad, Kyo. They're just acknowledging that I am the more handsome one. Naruto cooed at Kaishiro with amusement. Kaishiro smirks mockingly. Or maybe it's because you're the one with all the maternal instincts. Kaishiro catches the paperweight thrown at his head easily and chuckles. Says the guy with the girly hair. Naruto grumbles good naturedly, both of them enjoying their little banter. You saying you hate my hair? Kaishiro asks with a scoff. Hate it? Naruto asks licking his lips remembering all the reasons he loved that hair. I fucking love it, babe. Kaishiro smirks. But Naruto draws, that doesn't make it any less girly. Kaishiro stands up from his position on the armchair and approaches Naruto intent on showing exactly who the girly one is but then the fox kid is back with Subasa in tow. I hope I didn't interrupt anything, Subasa looked at them both curiously. Kaishiro kept a blank face and retreated to his armchair while Naruto smirked at him. Have a seat, Subasa. As the man sat down in the offered seat he spoke, we postponed the search since you didn't give a new order. Naruto nodded, don't wait any longer and start the search today. Subasa frowned, and what about the clan compounds? Naruto shook his head, the clan compounds can wait. We will wait until the matches are over to start the search on them. That way we can have free access to the compounds without any risk of being caught. Yes, Naruto-sama. Kaishiro frowned thoughtfully. Subasa, I want you to monitor each compound more carefully now. Once the matches are over the compounds will be evacuated of their current residents as well as their personal belongings. Make sure that those personal belongings don't include what we are searching for. Subasa nodded, that would be wise. Naruto looked confused, Kyo, I don't think anyone even know about their existence. Just to be sure we can keep an eye on it, Nero. Better safe than sorry. Naruto nodded. Is there anything else, Naruto-sama? Kaishiro-sama? Naruto shook his head and dismissed Subasa. Subasa was gone just like he had arrived. Naruto turned to Kaishiro who was sitting there with the little fox in his arms. He was slowly petting it and giving it snacks. He smiled and moved towards them. They spent some time just relaxing and playing with the fox kit. That's when Kaishiro tensed, well looks like we will be meeting the kid and his mother now. They're here? Naruto asked with a raised eyebrow. He tried to sense what Kaishiro was sensing and among the mass of chakra signatures one felt different. A familiar kind of different, Naruto's eyes widened slightly in surprise. I take it that you sensed the kid, Kaishiro asked already knowing the answer. I thought he didn't have any kids yet. Naruto said perplexed. By the records, he doesn't. A secret lover and kid then? But our spies would have found out if that was the case, Naruto asked. I won't bet on that, she loves the kid, but something tells me that the sperm donor is not that much appreciated. Naruto hummed thoughtfully. You wish to meet them now? Kaishiro asks. It would not be difficult seeing as the kid and his mother was at the cafe just across the road from their housing. Naruto shakes his head, no, not yet. I don't enjoy walking in blind so we'll gather whatever we could about them first. Kaishiro nodded approvingly still petting the fox kit absentmindedly. I'll send some guys right away. Meanwhile, Kaishiro couldn't finish that sentence because he got a call from Hibara inviting them to some sort of party with the other dignitaries. They sighed and got ready for a long, annoying and boring event. How are they doing, Tsunade-sama? Karina asked Tsunade who just exited the ward after checking up on the defeated shinobi. None of them regained their consciousness yet and they had no clear detail on what happened to them. Most of the sensei, jonin and families were present looking for any details on their students slash children. All of them turned to Tsunade looking for some sort of information. Everyone's close family was present, but sadly for those with clans, most of their clans refused to come and see the ones that were defeated. Surprisingly both Niji and Hinata were present for Hanabi. But a closer examination made it clear that the only reason Niji came here was for Hinata, who still cared about her misguided sister, not for Hanabi. Kakashi and Jiraiya were suspiciously absent, and she felt a little uneasy. Sasuke was absent as well but that was no surprise. Everyone knew that the Uchiha didn't care about anyone else. All of them waited in anticipation for her to speak. Tsunade thought about her words carefully. Tsunade-sama, how are they? Asuma asked as he stood next to Karina. The pensive silence that Tsunade gave them was worrying. Finally Tsunade said, they're alive and I believe that they would wake up in a day or two. In the end Tsunade decided that that was the best answer she could give. Many sighed in relief but only a few noticed Tsunade's frown. Tsunade-sama, you aren't telling us everything. Innoichi said from his seat near his wife. Ino's mother was crying at the fate of her beloved daughter. After some contemplation Tsunade sighed, it was not like keeping it a secret would change anything, we aren't sure. What? Tsunade explained, we aren't sure about the state of the shinobi inside. From the outside they look fine and the broken bones have all been realigned and put in a cast. They show no signs of internal bleeding and their breathing and heartbeat checks out fine. Some of them might have a slight concussion that can be taken care of in a few days. Hanabi and Sakura suffered the most damage so far and they would need to spend the next three months in the hospital if things don't change. Why so long? Shikaku questions, our healers are capable of healing them completely in a shorter time. That's the problem, Tsunade says. None of our chakra techniques works on them. Naruto-kun Naruto turns around to face the one who addressed him. He already knew who was standing behind him. Milady, Naruto let out an amused smirk. You did well today, Naruto-kun. Yamini said with a sultry smirk. Naruto smirked right back at her. I take it you enjoyed watching them? Yamini gave a demure giggle. But Naruto could sense the sadistic joy and sinister intent behind that smile. He smiled right back at her. So should we expect you tonight? Naruto asks. Yamini looked at him with piercing violet eyes from under long lashes. Of course, I did accept your invitation earlier. I just hope that you know what you are getting into. With one more coy smile, Yamini moved away from him whispering to her guards. Naruto chuckled lowly. Oh, I know exactly what I am getting into. Naruto sama? Kirin slowly spoke up from beside him. Naruto looked at him, although his bodyguard wore that customary blank expression and his eyes were hidden, Naruto could very well sense his concern. That woman Kirin trailed of unsurely. Beside him, Rei had a similar frown. Naruto gave him an amused smile. What is it, Kirin? Naruto sama, there is something quite unsettling about that woman. We can sense some sort of dangerous aura from her presence alone. It was Rei who answered him in his stoic voice. Are you worried that she would harm me? Naruto sama, you're strong and she or her people would never come even close to leaving a scratch on you, but we are concerned. Naruto laughs at Kirin's words and then he smiles at them sincerely. I understand your concerns, but let me take care of this one. Kirin and Rei nodded reluctantly. Now I want everything to be ready for tonight's meeting. She is more dangerous than you believe and once she and her men enter the compound, I don't want any of them leaving without my permission. What are you saying, Tsunade sama? Tsunade's eyes harden. I meant what I said. The mystical palm technique, or any other medical technique doesn't works on them for whatever reason that we couldn't figure out. So most of the observations we made on the patients were using crude non-chakra methods, and such methods offer very less precision. So the conclusions I made are not one hundred percent precise. Why aren't they working? Gaia asked lowly. Tsunade sighs. We don't know yet. We're trying every chakra healing technique we know and they all get dispelled when used on them. It's like they're shielded from any and all external chakra techniques. We can't even do a scan to check out any damages to their chakra pathways. We even tried the Bikkugan, but even that can't see past whatever is shielding them. There were several gasps all around and Tsunade continues. At this moment, all we can do is treating their injuries using non-chakra methods and they take a much longer time than chakra healing methods. As far as we know, their body is healing as well as it can under these circumstances. Everyone sat there silently not knowing what to say. Finally, it was Shikaku who broke the silence. At least they're alive. Naruto sat in the armchair with his eyes closed and head tilted backwards and resting on the backrest. The party was over by sunset, and they spend the rest of the time taking care of some other things. Now the time for the dinner with Yamini was near. They're here. Naruto opened his eyes to look at Kaishiro who was leaning against the door frame. Naruto stood up silently and walked out followed by Kaishiro. Naruto could feel the chakra pulsing beneath his skin like a caged beast trying to snap free. He knew Kaishiro felt just as anxious. The both of them entered a giant hall bare of any other furniture. Yamini and three other men were already there. She had an amused smirk on her face like she had everything under control and it only amused Naruto. Naruto-kun, Yamini purred out in greeting taking a step forward towards him. Naruto moved forward slowly. I admit that this is a pretty face, but why don't you take Yamini out of the equation and show me your real form? Yamini chuckled. So you do know. Her chuckles turned into a full-blown laugh as her skin started shriveling up. It then peeled off to reveal sickeningly pale skin underneath and yellow eyes replaced violet ones. Naruto didn't react once Orochimaru's form came into view. The white skin had scales at some parts and Naruto wasn't surprised given what he knew. Glad to see me, Naruto-kun? Orochimaru lisped in snake-like voice. Naruto was silent. From the corner of his eyes, Orochimaru noticed the shadows from the corners moving and stretching. His eyes narrowed when all of a sudden eight individuals emerged from the shadows. They were all wearing black cloaks just like the one Kaishiro was currently wearing. The individuals arranged themselves behind Naruto with Kaishiro standing directly behind Naruto and four others on each side. Orochimaru stared at Naruto with a condensing smirk. I hope you aren't trying to intimidate me with the nine biju, Naruto-kun. Naruto shook his head like he was talking to some petulant kid. You know as well as I do that no human could ever recognize the biju while they're in their human form. And you just proved that you're not human. Orochimaru's eyes widened slightly and he cursed internally from that slip up. But it didn't matter anyway. Orochimaru doesn't speak and Naruto starts circling him. The look in his eyes is calm and bored, but Orochimaru feels like a prey. You know, Orochimaru, I found out some interesting information about you. Oh, and what would that be, Naruto-kun? Besides the fact that I am a demon? Orochimaru scoffs. Naruto stops directly behind Orochimaru. I know who you are, Amen. So you found out I was really hoping that you actually did want an alliance? Orochimaru speaks in a more thickly demonic voice. What are you going to do about it, my lord? He mocks. Oh wait, you're no lord. You rejected the position as the demon lord so that worthless maid of yours could remain as the lord, didn't you? Orochimaru sneers. Faster than Orochimaru could blink, there was seven chakra chains piercing through him. Orochimaru chuckles. You think you caught me? Think again. Lord Naruto and his body turns to mud. Naruto glares at the puddle of mud at his feet. He looks to the side to see that the three minions Orochimaru brought with him already dead at Shikaku's hands. Directly beneath the mud, a seal lights up and Naruto grins viciously. Why don't we pay dear old Amen a visit? Orochimaru sat in his underground lair thinking about the plans to destroy Konoha. Kabuto walked into the room only to find that Orochimaru's eyes narrowed all of a sudden. Orochimaru sama? My clone just got destroyed. I wonder what happened? Orochimaru murmurs. Kabuto, lock up the compound and tighten the security. I have a bad feeling about this. Kabuto nods and leaves the room quickly. Orochimaru is surprised when Kabuto returns to the room not even a ten seconds later. Kabuto, what is it? Kabuto looks nervous and Orochimaru knows that it's something serious. Orochimaru sama, every one of our shinobi are dead. Orochimaru's eyes widen. What? How can that be? I don't know, Orochimaru sama, and all the experiments are missing as well. There are no sign of enemies. We need to get out of here, Orochimaru sama. Orochimaru nods hastily. Whoever can take out every one of his shinobi right under his nose without him knowing had to be handled with caution. I don't think you'll be going anywhere. Orochimaru turns around at the voice to find Naruto standing causally leaning against the wall. Naruto, what brings you here? How did you find this place? Orochimaru hisses. Naruto raises an eyebrow. I admit that you're very good at hiding. Every lead we had on you, we end up facing one of your clones. No one could track this place either. Nice work hiding, but then I did a little homework and came up with a seal that could track you down using your clone's chakra. It was pretty easy after that. What do you want, Naruto? Orochimaru asks spitefully. You know your clone was quite rude to me and my mate, Amen. So we decided to pay a visit. Naruto says and Orochimaru looks around to see that he is surrounded by nine cloaked figures. Kabuto is standing silently, eyeing all of them with caution. So you found out? Orochimaru snarls. He's trapped and he knows it. What are you going to do about it? You have a lot to pay for Amen for what you did to Kaishiro's first mate and children, to my parents, to all those children you experimented on, to my Gigi and to Orochimaru, whose body you're currently possessing. Naruto says. Amen snarls again and he looks frantic and crazed. Amen. Amen turns to face the speaker and Kaishiro is standing before him, eyes red and demonic features on full display. Amen sneers. You think you can defeat me? You fool. You're no longer who you used to be. You don't have the power you used to. I will be the one ending you. Just like how I did with that vixen and kits of yours. Kaishiro's restraints snap audibly and he pounces, skin rips apart, and the next moment Amen in Orochimaru's body is buried under a ten-foot tall nine-tailed fox. Naruto sees Kabuto trying to attack, but before he has a chance to do anything, Maditabi pounces on the man. She is already changed into her bija form of a twelve-foot tall two-tailed cat made of blue lightning. Amen avoids Kaishiro's snapping jaws and shifts away. Orochimaru's body begins rippling and a reptilian tail emerges from behind him and his skin becomes completely scaled. Amen tries to attack Kaishiro, but the fox is better at evading the snake's fangs and clawing up the snake even more. Kabuto already lay dead at Maditabi's feet. So Maditabi joins Naruto and the others in watching Kaishiro tear Amen apart. Because that's what it is, Amen had no chance against Kaishiro. Amen gets thrown around and in the end Orochimaru's body is broken and bleeding. Kaishiro stalks towards the downed demon with vengeance. This was the demon that killed his beautiful first mate and his newborn kits, and he deserved to die the most gruesome death. Amen crawls backward in fright. Mercy, please show mercy. I admit defeat. Naruto raises an eyebrow. This was pathetic. You deserve no mercy, Naruto says because Kaishiro is beyond words right now, and the only things that come out of his mouth were growls and snarls. Amen turns towards Naruto. Please, my lord have mercy. Tell your mate to spare me. And why would I do that? Naruto says mockingly. Because Amen is frantically searching for a reason and finally, he says, because if your mate continues, then Orochimaru will die. Almost all of them scoff at him. Amen shakes his head frantically. Believe me, I am telling the truth. He's still in there. He's still alive. Maditabi is the one who speaks up. Oh, please, you have possessed him for almost four decades. There is no way his soul is still sustained. No human can survive a demonic possession for all those years. All of them agree. But Naruto is silent and Amen looks at him. You know I am telling the truth, don't you? He is Naruto says after some time. Amen sighs in relief when Kaishiro steps back from him. Kaishiro wants Amen dead, but he couldn't kill Orochimaru who was a victim in this as well. Amen hides a smirk when Kaishiro growls in frustration. You can't kill me without killing Orochimaru too. Amen says smugly. You're a kitsune. You would never intentionally hurt innocents. Oh, don't worry, Amen. I can remedy that quite quickly. Naruto smirks and steps forward. Amen feels fear crawl up his spine when Naruto crouched down beside him. This will hurt a lot. Naruto's hands glow a bright green color, and he places his hands on Orochimaru's chest. Amen panics when the hands sink into his chest as if they are intangible. No! Amen screams when Naruto grabs a hold of something inside him and tugs it outward. A loud wailing fills the room, but it is not coming from Orochimaru's mouth. Orochimaru's face is relaxed and his eyes closed in unconsciousness. The ghostly specter in Naruto's hands is screeching in indefinite pain. Naruto smirks and throws it to the other side of the room. Make him suffer, Kyo, Naruto says and then he turns back to Orochimaru. In a flash of fire, Naruto and the rest of the biju disappear with Orochimaru, leaving Amen and Kaishiro to their fun. Saiken, I need your help. Naruto mutters placing glowing green hands over Orochimaru's chest. They had teleported themselves to great distance away from Amen and Kaishiro. Saiken, the six-tailed slug nods and moves towards him and does the same as Naruto. Naruto curses when Orochimaru's heart stops again. The glow of their hands grows brighter and the heart starts beating once more. What Naruto did was a risky move. In fact, it was downright stupid move now that Naruto thought about it. He was too caught up on having his revenge and finishing of Amen that he didn't think about what would happen to Orochimaru. Naruto had literally ripped Amen out of Orochimaru's body, and that will leave some heavy damages on Orochimaru's soul. Not to mention the fact that the changes Amen's yokai had done to Orochimaru's body were now working against him. The disruption in the coils was preventing the healing. Naruto pursed his lips and thought. There was only one thing he could think of that could fix this. He cannot let Orochimaru die because that man was innocent. It wouldn't be fair if Orochimaru had to pay for the crimes that Amen had done while possessing him. In fact, he was pretty sure that if Orochimaru woke up with an intact mind, he would have no memory of the events past his fourteenth birthday. This was a big mess. But if the man had struggled against a demonic possession and survived this long, it wouldn't be fair to let him die like this. Madachan! Madachan! Look at this. What is it, Chome? Maditabi looked at the younger-tailed beast. Chome was pointing towards the distance where Orochimaru's underground base was. Maditabi looked and saw a seventy-foot tall white snake break out of the ground. Well, it's a good thing that we moved this far, Isabu remarks dryly. Sandoku, who was keeping an eye on Naruto and Saiken up until that moment, came to stand beside them and watch. Just then, Kaishiro in his fox form jumps out of the earth and grows bigger until he matches the snake in size. The fight was brutal and long. However, by the end, they all see Kaishiro standing victoriously over the pleading snake. Suffice to say, Kaishiro had no reason to stop this time. That was boring. Coco snocks as Kaishiro kills Amen. Maditabi scoffs at Coco. Like you could have done any better. Coco glares at his elder sibling. They all turn back to look at Naruto and Saiken and is surprised to see that they aren't there. They ditched us. Chomi says. Kaishiro's gonna be pissed that his mate didn't see his badass fight with the snake. Coco grins. Maditabi turns to look at where Kaishiro used to be, only to find him gone too. Oh, so he ditched us too. Coco whines. They all shake their head at him and vanish with their own teleportation. Tsunade walked into the council chambers lost and thought. The fools in the council had suddenly decided for a meeting and requested her immediate presence. From experience, Tsunade knew that they just wanted her there to sign on whatever decision they already had reached. Being Hokage was just another way of being the council's puppet. She wondered when she had let them get away with so much power. Just another one of her glorious mistakes, Tsunade sighed ruefully. Toborama and Minato were the only Hokage who could have kept the council on a leash. But both of them were long gone. Maybe if he had some more time, Minato could have brought some changes to the corrupt council. Then again, if Minato had more time, a lot of things would have been different. Tsunade entered the council chamber without any preamble. The first thing she notes is that Kakashi and Jiraiya are both present and the pensive frown on their faces means nothing good. She is silent and sharp as she sits down on her seat. The lack of her usual anger only made the room tenser. Tsunade raises an eyebrow at Danzo, silently asking him to speak. Danzo steps forward and his grim expression didn't hide enough of his satisfaction. Tsunade sends you, you are declared unfit for the position of the Hokage. Tsunade stood up angrily. Her palms slammed down on the table with enough force that the table became a pile of splinters. On what ground am I unfit for my position? The council has no power over my kage position. Tsunade glared at the smug-looking council members and they trembled under her rage. Danzo shook his head slowly. The council has unanimously voted against you. The Umbo commander and third-in-command Kakashi Hataki, as well as second-in-command Sanin Jiraiya, have stated that you are not fit for duty under the current situation. You yourself appointed them as your second and third-in-command to the kage position, and both of them have voted against you. Tsunade trembled in rage as she turned her gaze towards Jiraiya and Kakashi. They didn't meet her gaze and Tsunade swallowed the venom boiling in her tongue. She wanted to latch out at them for betraying the trust she had placed in them, but she couldn't say that she had expected any better of them. Vaguely, she wondered whether what she felt now was even worth comparing to what Naruto must have felt all those years ago. Danzo continues on. The final decision was made based on the opinion of the majority. Tsunade's eyes narrowed as she looked at the council members present. How can that be when only half of the council is present? Where is the rest of the shinobi council? Danzo smirked. This is the shinobi council Tsunade, at least what's left of them. Tsunade opens her mouth to speak, but Danzo cuts her off. By the village rules, a representative from each clan, the Umbo commander and the Sanin are what makes the shinobi half of the council. As you can see, the Umbo commander as well the remaining Sanin along with the clan representatives are here. Tsunade resists a scoff as she looks at the shinobi half of the council. The only ones present were Jiraiya, Kakashi, that Uchiha brat, then Asuma as the Saratobi clan head and Shizen as the Senju clan representative since Tsunade was the Hokage. Seeing Tsunade's confused, found Danzo explained. Konoha's rules specify that for a family to be registered as a clan, they need a clan compound. Without a clan compound, they cannot be a clan. Tsunade's eyes widened. Every member that was defeated today lost their clan compound and wealth to Naruto, and as a result, they lost their status as a clan as well. You need the Daimyo's permission for this to be official, Tsunade said. He will be arriving shortly, Danzo said. Tsunade sat down back in the chair silently. All of them were confused when the angry woman suddenly turned silent. Jiraiya saw the look on Tsunade's face and he knew that whatever happened next would be bad. Soon the Daimyo arrived. Naruto and Saiken appeared inside their lab in Demon Country. The demons and humans working there turned to them in surprise. Naruto used his chakra to move Orochimaru's body into a chamber all the while pumping a steady supply of his chakra to keep him alive. Naruto sama, you can release him now. He is stable. Naruto nodded to Saiken and released his chakra from Orochimaru. What do you want me to do, Naruto sama? Saiken asked and Naruto turned to him frowning. As Naruto explained to Saiken what needed to be done, Saiken was surprised. But he didn't question his lord's actions. Once he was sure that everything was okay, Naruto left the facility. There was something he needed to take care of. Subasa and Irika sat inside Naruto's place in Konoha stiffly. The both of them were waiting for Naruto to arrive. But it was Kaishiro who appeared before them. Irika and Subasa both noted that Kaishiro looked at peace somehow like a weight had been lifted off of his shoulders. What's wrong? Kaishiro asked seeing their frowns. Subasa was the one who said it. The council made a move, Kaishiro sama. More like Danzo made his move, Irika scoffed. What happened? Kaishiro asked pensively. There was council meeting soon after you left. Danzo managed to convince the entire council that Tsunade was no longer an acceptable kage. So now there is a new kage, Subasa said scowling. Kaishiro raised an eyebrow. A new kage? The council doesn't have that kind of power. Irika shook his head. The council doesn't. But two years ago, Tsunade appointed Jiraiya as her second-in-command and Hataki as her third-in-command. Their combined opinions have the power to question the kage's authority. They also had the Daimyo present at the meeting. And the Daimyo agreed? Kaishiro asked amused. No, Subasa spoke. He gave Senjusen the choice. Irika chuckled. And she said that Konoha can go fuck itself because she no longer wants to leave this hellhole.